Good evening, everyone. We're going to start the meeting. Call the order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Paritano?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Boyle?
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbach?
President.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mr. Merington?
Here.
Mr. Sirlo?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
President.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, August 24th Public Board Meeting of the Nishamani School Board Directors. Our executive session statement, the Board met an executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Do we have any announcements?
There are no announcements.
Thank you. Before I introduce Dr. McGee for this evening's superintendent report, I would like to state that I'm glad that so many people came out tonight. I know the vast majority of those attending tonight are here to discuss any proposal that may amend the district's health and safety plan of July 22, 2021. We also know for many emotions surrounding this issue run very high. Over the last eighteen-plus months, our community and especially our children have been put through a lot, and everybody shares an opinion on the issue. I ask you to please remember, the reason we are here is to secure the best environment for our children's education. Just because someone doesn't share or agree with your viewpoint does not make them your enemy. We need to respect each other's point of view. Many, I'm sure, have seen videos from other Bucks County meetings. There is no reason to devolve into that type of atmosphere. Please remember, we may have some children here, and there are definitely children watching at home, and they look to us for guidance. Let's not give them any reason to believe screaming, yelling, and disrespecting each other is the way to get your point across. We are one Nishamani community with one ultimate goal in mind: our children's education. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Paritano. I'd like to start with the enrollment report of August 2021. Our enrollment is 9,409 students, which is pretty stable from last year. If I go back two years, we are missing, or down, just under 200 students. If I were to go looking for those students, they are in our elementary level. We're down approximately 150 students at the elementary level, and right now, we are down 100 kindergarteners from two years ago. That being said, the class of 2025 will enter Nishamani High School next Wednesday. They are nearly 200 larger than the graduating class of 2021. They come in at 740-strong. So that's our enrollment report, hoping we can find those 100 kindergarteners somewhere along the way, maybe in first grade. We're ready for the start of school, almost. Today and tomorrow saw our high schoolers, class of 2025, and new students to the high school, visit the high school for the first time, get orientated, get to see their schedules, walk their schedules, and try to open their new locker. On Thursday, our middle schools will do the same thing, and next Tuesday, the day before school starts, the elementary schools will do the same thing. On September 1st, our kindergarteners, 5th grade and 9th grade, will have their first day of school, so they can experience their new environment without their schoolmates in there. And then on September 2nd, we're asking K through 12 to return to school. As far as readiness, our buildings look great. Custodial staff, ground staff, has done an outstanding job. However, over the summer, we've experienced some of the things that the rest of society has experienced: shipping delays, delays in getting our materials. So there are a few things that are covered up for the next week. There's an elevator missing here in this building, a few HVAC units that are somewhere at sea or on trucks, and various things like that throughout the district. We hope to have them shortly in September and get them in place without disrupting education. So we are in a great spot to start a brand-new school year. Next topic is obviously our health and safety plan. So I'm going to take you through a little bit of a story here, so at least we're all on the same page. On July 22nd, with my recommendation and collaboration with the superintendents across the county and the Bucks County Department of Health, the Board approved our health and safety plan. It was based on the virus and COVID at the time, which was late June, early July, and obviously since then, things have changed. The philosophy of the plan is opposite of what we did last year. Last year, we did the most restrictive things and did not open school, and then tried to coax people, convince people that school was safe, and bring them back into school. And we did that pretty successfully here. This year, the goal was, at that time, to do the least restrictive and add things in along the way when it became necessary. So that's kind of the philosophy behind the plan when it was made. I don't know that any of us expected that adding things in would begin in August before school started. So the idea of the plan is what Dr. Damsker calls targeted temporary mitigation. Do it where it's needed, for as long as it's needed, to resolve the issue, and then take things back to normal as best we can. We saw some targeted temporary mitigations from the Bucks County Department of Health on August 15th, which includes what should happen when students test positive, and we had planned to implement them. I believe the original plan itself, from July 22nd, gave me the authority, with Dr. Damsker's advice, to do that. Two days later, we saw much broader guidance from the Department of Health that said, "Follow the masking requirements from the CDC." And then just this morning, last night, at 10 o'clock, we got even broader guidance from the CDC, or from the Bucks County Department of Health about follow all guidance from the CDC. So my role as superintendent is to make sure we do things as we're supposed to do. So the Board makes policy, think law, all right? And those policies, I have to implement with the administrative team to govern the district, to make things go well, all right? Many of the policies refer to following guidance, all right? In this case, it's my job to let the Board know that our policy, the health and safety plan that we passed on July 22nd, no longer aligns with the guidance, all right? So that's why the change is necessary. I also have to advise the Board that my recommendation of the additions does not align with the guidance as well, giving the Board the decision to make new policy, new law, as to how Nishamani works, okay? So that's why we're here. That's why we're here. We set out with the goal to have the safest learning environment possible, at the same time have our best instruction and the least restrictive environment. That is the goal. So if we look at how things have changed since we first adopted this plan, the incident rate in the county, based on the website I use from the state, there are different numbers out there, this is the one I've been using. When we made the plan, the incident rate was six out of 100,000 in the county, went to eight the next week. This week, or last week, ending on the 19th, it's 96 out of 10,000. The state classifies that just below high in the substantial category. If you look at other websites, we're already in the substantial category. The goal is to look more specifically, and even the CDC's goal, at the local conditions, all right? So we're even doing that in Bucks County. The case count in upper Bucks is different than the case count in lower Bucks. So if you're reading my emails, you see that the Department of Health, Bucks County, has translated their data into the last seven days, and it's pretty accurate. And there are six municipalities in Nishamani, and the prior seven days had 55 cases in our Nishamani community in that seven days. Doesn't seem like a lot, but that's 55 over 62,000, and that's not out of 100,000, so we have to do some middle school math and turn that into something out of 100,000, and that something turns out to be just under 90. So the incident rate in the Nishamani, a week ago, was 90 out of 100,000. If we do it on the last seven days, the maximum number in the Nishamani was 81 out of 62,000, turning that into over 100,000, at 140-something out of 100,000, all right? So by using the local data, we are higher than the county average, because there's more people down here. So our goal was to get back to the best practices in our classrooms. We got kids back to school last year. We did it really well. We did it safely. But what went on in the classrooms wasn't necessarily the best we can do. We had things divided up, spread out, things were missing, kids worked individually way too much, teachers stayed away from. We were hoping to get back to 2019. So how we got here? Last year, and bear with me for this, in September, we didn't open schools, because we didn't know what was going on, seemed like the safest thing to do, all right? The incident rate last September was significantly lower than it is now. Now we're opening schools, that's a good thing. In October and November last year, we brought back our kids every other day, two days a week. In December through February, we brought back the elementary school kids four days a week. March, we brought back the elementary school kids five days a week, and the middle school kids three days a week. And finally, I think it was April 5th, we brought all kids who wanted to come back five days a week. In doing that, we did it in cooperation with the Bucks County Department of Health, all right? In doing that, we did things counter to the CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health's recommendations, all right? The CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health said we should be in remote learning well into the spring months. They sent me letters every week saying, "Your district should be on remote," based on their scale at that time. We took our six-foot distance and shrunk it to three to get our elementary school kids back in, and then our secondary kids in. The CDC recommendations were six feet. Working with the Bucks County Department of Health, we were able to do that successfully and safely. Over the course of the year, quarantining started at 14 days. Dr. Damsker implemented 10 days with good rationale. We saved four days. Then he implemented seven days if he got a positive test after five, and all along the way was his idea of modified quarantine to get kids back to school. All of them are counter to the State Department of Health and the CDC at that time. We were able to do it successfully. Somewhere in April, we decided it's okay, May maybe, okay that kids outside exerting themselves on recess in phys ed class didn't need to wear their masks, all right? Again, counter to the CDC recommendation, we were able to do it safe, working with the Pennsylvania, or the Bucks County Department of Health. We find ourselves in a situation now that we don't have that partner recommending us do other things. Their recommendations recommend that we follow the CDC on masking, all right? So that's the significant difference. That is the significant difference. The local health authority, who worked me through, personally me through, and every superintendent in the county through last year successfully, is now recommending that we follow guidance of the state and the CDC. So that's kind of the history of why we were able to do what we did last year and why we're in a situation now that differs. So those of you who are reading my email aren't going to be surprised with this. It is my recommendation that we implement mask requirements K to 8 with a medical exemption for parents who can get their doctor to attest that they're not allowed or not good to wear a mask. It's my recommendation that has a sunset on October 1st, unless the Board chooses to act again. So in addition to that, I learned just Monday that the solicitor for the Board has also recommended that the Board enact masking on buses from K to 12. That was not part of my original recommendation, but now the Board has that recommendation from the solicitor. So late last night, we received additional information from the Bucks County Department of Health that we have not fully digested yet. I have not spoken personally to Dr. Damsker. We believe that additional information of what needs to be done can be done between the Department of Health and the superintendent of schools to make schools safe. So once I have a chance to speak to Dr. Damsker on his thoughts on it, and he can work us through it, we will move to implementing those pieces in a more specific way. I will let you know that though we put it on the shelf, our COVID team is back in the game. That is our cabinet and all those who did what we did last year. We didn't think we were going to need it, but apparently we are. So we are spinning that up. We are getting all the classrooms and facilities ready for the same spot we were last year. And then last year, I don't know if you're aware, the cabinet met every morning at 9 o'clock specifically to go over COVID cases of staff and students in the district to make sure that we did the right thing. So we're prepared to do that again, wherever the next four weeks leads us. If you know, you're better than I, but we will make our way through it one step at a time. So, Mr. Paritano, that's my report, and that is my recommendation, how we proceed.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. At this particular time, we're going to hold off any Board questions that we would normally do during superintendent's report, and we will shift this matter to other Board business portion of the agenda. So that will bring us to our first period of public comment. Now, before we start our first session, I want to make sure everybody's clear on how public comment works, because I'm sure a lot of people are here speaking for the first time. We will abide by regular rules of Policy 903 for public speaking. The first period of public speaking is a one-hour time limit. You're allowed three minutes per speaker. I do ask that if you don't need to use all three minutes, save them so we can get more people up to the podium, if possible, but you're entitled to three minutes. It will be a strict time clock at the 10-second mark. I'll let you know that you have 10 seconds left to finish up your comments. If the number of sign-ups tonight have exceeded the time allowed, those speakers will be called first during the second comment period, which lasts for 30 minutes. If, and only if, a motion is undertaken by the Board during the meeting to address the administration's recommendations on amending the health and safety plan as outlined in the superintendent's report, those speakers who did sign up for first period but time was exhausted will be called in order to address the Board on the subject matter under consideration by Board motion. Your comments must pertain to the motion that's before the Board. No other speakers will be heard that were not on the first-period signup list. That period will last no longer than 30 minutes. At the end of the meeting, or before the meeting ends, we will have a normal second public comment period regardless of the additional time allowed on a possible motion by the Board. With that, I'll turn to our secretary to call our first public speaker.
All right. Number one, Lynda Pritchard.
Ms. Pritchard, please state your name, the area in which you live in, and your occupation, and please address the Board directly. You have three minutes.
I'm Lynda Pritchard, from Langhorne, and I'm a mother. Good evening. Dr. McGee has explained that the goal of targeted temporary mitigation strategies is to address specific areas of need as COVID moves from pandemic to endemic over the next several years. I understand that experts expect COVID-19 to become endemic eventually, but we are not at that point right now, and with this more contagious, more dangerous Delta variant, we should still be fighting this pandemic with everything we've got. All last year, with every update, Dr. McGee included this graphic of the Swiss cheese approach to pandemic defense. This approach recognizes that no single intervention is perfect at preventing spread, but that multiple layers improve success. Indeed, following this approach was successful. It makes no rational sense, then, that Nishamani would abandon this approach when more than half of its student population is ineligible for vaccination and our community is experiencing a high rate of transmission. Masks should be required, not optional. Our rights and freedoms are not unlimited. It is a well-established fundamental principle recognized by the United States Supreme Court that we don't have a right to put others at risk. The laws don't give parents a choice when it comes to car seats, seat belts, or providing alcohol to underage children. We don't allow smoking on school property because it infringes on the rights of others to breathe clean air. One's freedom to be maskless should not interfere with someone's freedom to be healthy and to be educated in a safe environment. People who do not mask are more likely to infect others. Please revise the mask requirement to include K through 12, as all of the public health guidance available to you now recommends. I urge you to honor the pleas of local hospitals. To do so is fitting to Nishamani's mission statement that people have a responsibility to themselves and others, that excellence in education requires support, sacrifice, and involvement from the total community, and that all people have the right to a safe and healthy learning environment. Two of the TTM strategies in the proposed plan call for seven days of masking for anyone who has tested positive or has a positive COVID contact at home. If masking is optional, what is the specific plan to ensure that these individuals mask all day for seven days? I would also like the district to continue contact tracing. It's another tool in our toolkit, another layer of protection, and it could save lives. I'm simply asking for information so I can be proactive in protecting my high-risk household. If I know of an exposure, I can have my kid tested, I can isolate within our house, and most importantly, if we have exposure, my husband, a kidney transplant recipient, is eligible to receive monoclonal antibodies. This treatment could be a matter of life or death for him, and it needs to be administered as early as possible.
10 seconds.
As you told all of us last year, multiple layers of protection improve success. Let's not give up now. Following all the recommendations of federal, state, and local public health departments will serve our district well.
Number two, Karen Blumenfeld.
Dr. McGee, President Paritano, members of the Board of Directors. My name is Karen Blumenfeld. I have lived in Langhorne for 20 years, and I am the mom of a 2019 graduate and a current junior at the high school. I'm a stay-at-home mom, and up until March of 2020 was an extremely involved volunteer in Nishamani for more than a decade, both on committees to steer the direction of the district and directly with the kids in multiple ways. I really hope to get back to that soon. I'm hoping it'll be later this year. Last September, the school year opened virtually and gradually made its way to in-person instruction for all who wanted it. You did this in a meaningfully successful way with some periods of large quarantines, but as I understand it, relatively low numbers of ill children. This is an accomplishment. As has been recounted by officials at this district, Dr. McGee, tonight, this was in some ways backwards, because numbers were lowest in September, and we could have and should have been in school then, too, only adding mitigation when warranted. I understand this hindsight feeling, but I do think that the unprecedented nature of last year required learning what it took to be at least somewhat assured that rooms of people together for hours at a time was going to work out. And you did it. You learned what worked to get back to a closer-to-normal state where everyone could have face-to-face learning. So please, I'm just begging that we not throw away that learning and success on a model that even the most risk-tolerant health authority in our chain now believes is too risky for our area. The Delta variant has our local hospitals worried about the system failing if we have an outbreak, anything like the southern states, and Dr. Damsker responded to that by issuing mask guidance stricter than what he had been advising. If even Dr. Damsker is now convinced that it is a risk to our health system to have unmasked children in school, that should make everyone sit up and take notice. I know this administration and Board have thought of Dr. Damsker as its guide, but if you adopt the plan before you today, you are disregarding that guidance in a way that surprises and alarms me. It makes our health system more vulnerable to being overrun, it makes our kids more vulnerable to illness, and it makes our district more vulnerable to high rates of absenteeism, leading to more learning loss just at the time they are all trying to catch up. So please, please vote to follow all of the updated BC DOH guidance, including but not only universal masking for the safety of everyone in the Nishamani community. All of us remembering that my mask protects you and your mask protects me is in keeping with the motto of Nishamani. It's hilarious. A motto that affirms people have a responsibility to themselves and others. Excellence in education requires support, sacrifice, and involvement from the total community, and all people have a right to a safe and healthy learning environment.
Number three, Jeremy Blumenfeld.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Jeremy Blumenfeld. I'm a lawyer. I've lived in Langhorne for 20 years, and I'm the parent of a high school junior. I urge you to modify the health and safety plan to require masks in all grades, as the Department of Health recommends. Nobody wants our kids to have to wear masks in schools, but it is one of the best ways we know to minimize the spread of COVID and to keep our kids as safe and healthy as possible. We do that all the time for kids in school. The school districts make students wear pads and helmets when they play football or baseball. We don't make it helmets optional. In science labs, the school district makes kids wear lab coats, gloves, and safety goggles. Again, we don't make it optional. Kids can't come to school if they have a high fever or have head lice. I'm sure that a big part of the reason for that is we are trying to protect them from spreading it to other kids. This should be no different. The Nishamani Student Dress Code even says that school attire must not endanger student or public health. And I know there is some notion that high school students are different. They're older, so they should be allowed to make their own decisions, but that doesn't work here. It doesn't work here because when a kid, even a high school student, does not wear a mask inside a classroom, it puts others at risk. And that same dress code prohibits high school students from wearing hats, pajamas, and bandanas, and makes them wear shoes. We don't make it pajamas optional, we don't make it hats optional, we don't make it shoes optional because they're in high school. It shouldn't be masks optional either. Just like the school district makes kids wear helmets, lab coats, gloves, safety goggles, shoes, they need to wear masks, too, for the same reasons. The health and safety plan that you adopted in July specifically said that the Bucks County Department of Health may recommend temporary disease mitigation strategies such as increased physical distancing and masking, and that Nishamani will follow any such recommendations made by the Bucks County Department of Health. The revised proposed plan has the same exact language, but as you know, here, now, that means universal masking for all students. Please continue to follow that guidance, like you voted to before, and require masks.
Number four, Nick Portner.
Can you guys hear me? Good evening, guys. Thanks for having me. My name's Nick Portner. I've lived in Buckridge Farms, Lower Southampton, for 45 years. I'm a redskin, proud and through. Graduated here. Hope my daughter continues to go to school here and graduates here. Let me start off by saying I'm not a doctor, I'm definitely not a lawyer, and I'm not an infectious disease expert. I am a neighbor, I am a town leader, I am a husband, and most importantly, I'm a father. I have been right where all of you are now, being asked to make a tough decision, a decision now that no one else wants to make. Nonetheless, it needs to be made, so I applaud you guys on that. As we know, tonight, you will once again make a decision to either mandate the masking of our children or not, allowing us to see their of our children or not, allowing us to see their smiles or not. I ask why mandate? Why not leave it optional? I could read a bunch of facts that I found on the internet, I could manipulate numbers to favor my opinion, I could show you OSHA standards on how long an adult can safely wear an N95 mask on a job site. I could go on and on, but I feel that horse has been beaten. What I can tell you is what I know, a little common sense. First, not every recommendation is correct. Not everybody's going to agree on the same recommendation. I read Dr. McGee's letter, I read the BCHD's recommendations. One thing stuck in my head due to a spike. I heard Dr. McGee just earlier reference the spike. Numbers are numbers. You can manipulate and make them sound whatever you want. Yesterday had zero cases, today had two. That's a 200%. Is that a spike? Or is that just a number that we're using to manipulate a board to make a decision? Second, some people won't agree with me. I'm heartless. Kids always get sick, people always get sick. No matter what we do, someone is going to get sick. I meant it, guys. Some people get sicker than others, some people less, but eventually, we all get sick. Last year, my daughter wore a mask, wore a mask every day, followed the guidelines set up by this very own board and school district. She got strep throat in the spring, and all her friends in the same class got strep throat. I asked myself, how could this happen if they're all wearing masks? The answer's easy: children get sick. How can you tell me a mask works against COVID but not strep throat? You can't. I would just like to say these last few words before my time expires. I know there was a work session prior to this meeting. I know the topic was thoroughly discussed. I hope everyone came here tonight with an open mind. I hope tonight's meeting is not just a formality or an exercise to let citizens and people at this school just express our points and our frustrations. I hope it doesn't fall on deaf ears. You were all elected to this position, you're all the voice of your district. Please speak for them. Everyone needs to vote tonight, no exceptions. Please hear me.
Ten seconds.
I am asking you to follow the original plan from this summer, leaving masking optional. Leave the masking decision to us, the parents. Thank you.
Number five, Mike Hurforn.
Good evening, board. My name is Mike Hurforn. I'm a community member in the Lower Southampton Township and a father of Nishamani School District children. Good evening, board, concerned parents, and Dr. McGee. Dr. McGee, your 11th-hour decision to change your COVID policy recommendation is appalling. You blindly accepted Dr. Damsker's politically motivated recommendation and seemingly with no grasp of, or the lack of science behind it. You passed the buck on to the board members to charge, to change a much-welcome-the-mask-optional policy adopted in July. A true leader would look at all available data and make the best recommendation, not the most politically convenient one. This lack of leadership spoils confidence in your organization that we pay good money towards to educate and nurture our children. I feel the resignation would be the most appropriate outcome here. Board members, thank you for taking this red-hot issue to a vote this evening. That is sincerely appreciated. Dr. McGee would have our children now entering a third year of a school in a twisted dystopian environment where they are scolded for trying to take a fresher breath there, are told either verbally or subconsciously that everyone around them is sick and they need to be afraid of their friends, the same friends that most of them have been playing with together outside of school, obviously, maskless, for over a year. A third year of our children having to spend valuable time, or, I'm sorry, our teachers having to spend valuable time playing mask and physical distance police. A third year of children huddled at their desk, eating lunch, staring at the chalkboard instead of chatting and having fun with their friends. For what? On the CDC.gov website, as of today, August 24th, there have been a total of 296 deaths related to COVID in children's 5 to 18 years of age in almost two years, the period from January 4, 2020 to August 18, 2021. Each one of these deaths is tragic, but if you dig deeper, the overwhelming majority of these poor children had a severe underlying condition or passed away from something unrelated to COVID but tested positive at the time of death. Dr. Damsker's latest guidance is not based on data that is related to children and COVID. In fact, it does not even reference any science of that nature at all. It's based on hospital executives saying they don't have the capacity for a hypothetical rush on ICU beds for children, something we didn't see even in the height of the pandemic. Nobody believes that this is going to take place only until October 1st. Dr. McGee famously said at the close of last semester that even though the science backs kids going to school maskless, it would be too difficult to reteach the kids to remove the masks. We are now on 515th day of 15 days to flatten the curve, and our kids continue to be damaged for the rest of their lives as the adults whipsaw back and forth with the restrictions we put on them. Please have the courage to ignore the politics and trust the science with our kids' lives and futures. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Number six, Jennifer Brenner.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Brenner. I'm in the Twin Oaks section of Middletown Township. I'm a stay-at-home mom slash self-employed. In March of 2020, we were told two weeks to flatten the curve. Everything shut down, we stayed inside, we kept our kids home when we did go out. Our kids, despite our best efforts, may have felt or heard our fears, but with very little knowledge of what was going on, it was our responsibility to protect them. Now, here we are, August of 2021, still talking about masking our kids. While no one wants their kids to possibly get sick, why are we not focused on their mental health from all of this? They've been distanced from friends, family, and at lunch, they'll be separated and allowed to sit in front of a screen while they eat, further isolating them from friends. Having a screen at the dinner table isn't permitted in our household, let alone unmonitored YouTube access. They've suffered losses during this time and weren't permitted to mourn properly. We need to respect the "recommend" portion of the guidance and let families decide what works best for them and their beliefs and what they have researched. Our lives are filled with risk. Everyone here tonight took a risk getting behind a wheel. We need to return to a life of freedom. Thank you.
Number seven, Berkeley Brenner.
There you are.
I'm Berkeley Brenner. I'm a student here at Maple Point. Last year was my first year here, and I got to experience what it was like during COVID. And some of the safety prone calls weren't my liking. I feel that parents should be able to make decisions for the child about wearing masks. If you'd like to, go right ahead. If you don't, go right ahead. Also, I'd like to have lockers because I had to carry my backpack, and it was very heavy. Believe me. And my back hurt. My back would thank you if I got to have lockers, but I'd also get to decorate it, express myself. I'd also like bigger lunch tables because I'd have to yell to my friends to talk to them. I hope you consider what I said. Thank you for listening.
Number eight, Rick Pepito.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rick Pepito. Last year, we were sent numerous polls on what the school should do. I followed these polls that consistently showed by a very large margin that parents wanted their children in school full-time. Despite it showing that, the board decided the opposite and at least agreed upon approach. Now, we're being told this year is based upon CDC information, which is constantly changing. We were promised that when the kids went back that they'd get mask breaks. These breaks were denied. My 11-year-old daughter played a basketball game in the gym for 25 minutes, then asked if she could step outside to get some air. She was told by her teacher that she can step outside but not remove her mask. For anyone playing sports, this is very dangerous. My 10-year-old son has seasonal allergies. He was not given a mask break. There are also no socializing allowed in the school at locker and lunch breaks. These are prison conditions. The letter we received last week claimed that the quote, "The goal is to balance the least restrictive environment," yet you're requiring our kids to be restricted socially and physically because of this mask. Do you think this is healthy for their development? Do you think that a K to 4 age student who has a speech impediment and learning disability would be able to correct the issue if they can't see mouths move? Do you think that a young boy or girl who's beginning to go through hormonal changes in the fifth to eighth grade ranges would be able to interact with someone they may be attracted to, or worse yet, deal with peer pressure from others correctly without social interaction? And what lesson do we teach them if the peer pressure from the school board to have this approach isn't dealt with properly? This is flat-out child abuse, and any school board making that decision is the cause. If people are high-risk and worried, stay home. If there is a concern among the staff, why don't they go get vaccinated? If that isn't an option and parents are concerned, then how about taking a poll for each student? Make classrooms that place unmasked kids and masked kids in their own areas. I am not about separating into groups, but in this instance, it only makes sense because it respects everyone, from parents to teachers and students. How about us as parents be the ones thinking for our children in K through 8, not the board? We pay the taxes despite a lackadaisical effort by the district last year for you to help teach our children. It has been said that this is the new normal. Well, it's not normal for parents not to have a say. I know there is an option to get medical exemption. This is not an option for everyone, and it causes bullying to occur by singling out individuals. In closing, I'm pleading with you, please, do not take this out on our children and punish them because of their fears and a lack of concrete medical information and political stances. Show our children that there is hope, because every day, I see more and more of them being depressed at an astronomical rate. Give our children the hope for a better future without fear and restrictions. Give our children the freedom they deserve to grow and be better than all of us. Give our children their youth and let them enjoy it. Thank you.
Number nine, Matt Taylor.
Matt Taylor, Red Rose Gate, and I'm self-employed. I come before you today respectfully asking the board to vote no for the proposed changes to the health and safety plan that would require K through 8 to wear a mask in school. With over 18 months of data from the CDC and from others around the world, one thing is clear: COVID-19 and its variants pose very little risk to children. For something that poses so little risk to these kids, we ask them to sacrifice the most. The largest burden has been placed on the youngest and least vulnerable population, while failing to consider the negative effects from these mitigations. As we all know, the American Academy of Pediatrics is recommending masks on kids. However, data published on their own website fails to back up or validate their recommendation. The AAP compiled data from multiple states using data as recently as August 12, 2021. In the report, it states, quote, "The available data indicate that COVID-19-associated hospitalization and death is uncommon in children," and also, quote, "At this time, it appears that severe illness due to COVID-19 is uncommon among children." In its report, it noted that 23 states plus New York City reported that 0.2% to 1.9% of child COVID-19 cases resulted in hospitalization. It also reported that among 43 states plus New York, Puerto Rico, and Guam, children were 0% to 0.25% of all COVID deaths, and seven states reported zero child deaths. Also, only 0% to 0.03% of all child COVID-19 cases resulted in death. The risk of COVID-19 to children is small, but the physical and mental health impacts of these virus mitigations could be far more damaging. What kids have been asked to sacrifice far outweighs their own health risks from the virus. Studies have shown an alarming increase in intentional self-harm, overdoses, anxiety, and depressive disorder, as well as increased reports of headaches, increased reluctance to go to school, unhappiness, impaired learning, drowsiness, and fatigue, all attributed to mitigations such as mask-wearing. Last year, you knew and understood the importance of getting kids back in school. You went against CDC and PA Health Department recommendations, and it was the right thing to do. Wearing a mask in school is not mandated by any government, federal, state, or local. They have dropped that decision on your laps, hoping you'll do it for them because they know they can't. We are heading down a dangerous path of authoritarianism that will never end. If we do not stand up for parental choice on masks today, it will only get worse. If we continue to blindly follow these government recommendations, this will never end. But if you choose, it can end today. The parents' right to choose what is best for their child is at risk of being taken away yet again for the third straight year. You have the ability and opportunity to make masks optional and to give hope for thousands of parents who think there is no hope left. Will you bend the knee to authoritarianism where you will stand for the--
Number 10, Jamie Taylor. Okay. Thank you.
Jamie Taylor, Red Rose Gate, stay-at-home mom, two, three children. As my husband just informed you of all the facts to back us up on our decision that masks need to be optional, so I'm not going to repeat any of that to you. I'm sure you've gotten plenty of emails from the people here, and you will hear more facts to back that up. I want to speak to you today about my daughter's experience last year in kindergarten and her hope for this upcoming year in first grade. When elementary finally went all-in last year, my daughter was so excited to be with her entire class. That excitement quickly faded when she began to tire of wearing her mask all day, every day. My daughter has loved school since she first started preschool at the age of three. When she began to not want to go to school, I asked why. She replied, "Because I have to wear a mask all day. It gets hot and sweaty and wet, and I don't like it. It gets hard to breathe." I always sent my daughter to school with multiple clean masks every day to change throughout the day, but that was never enough. What about the kids who aren't sent with multiple clean masks? I can't even count how many email reminders we got from the teacher about sending your kids to school with clean masks every day. Apparently, she also learned in school last year that if she touches a classmate, she'll get sick, so she got scared to play with her friends during recess. She also began to complain of always being tired and having headaches. In the spring, when masks became optional outside for recess in gym, I had to fight with emails to her teacher, the principal, even Dr. McGee. It took multiple emails and phone calls for my daughter to be able to pull the mask down to her chin outside for recess. She still ended the year wearing her mask outside in gym class. I'm so tired of fighting for something that should be my choice for my child. Kindergarten is an important year for learning fundamentals such as reading readiness, letter recognition, beginning sounds, social cues, emotional skills. I feel she has been deprived of many of these aspects of her education due to masks. How can she see the teacher's mouth while pronouncing words or hearing a muffled version of something that, of how, sorry, hearing a muffled version of how something is supposed to sound? Enough is enough. She was robbed of her kindergarten experience. Please don't take another year of her education away. After getting her new teacher assignment for first grade and receiving a letter in the mail from her teacher, my daughter became so excited for school again. In her teacher's letter, she stated, quote, "Don't forget to show up with a big smile to start the year off right. You know it would be great if her teacher could actually see the smiles on her students' faces." I know it's been said, it's only 19 days of mask, and we'll revisit it on October 1st, but we all know, we've been through it last year. The mask will stay on, this will just keep going. Please vote to keep the masks optional. This is a parent's choice to make for their own children. We need to let kids be kids and get the education they deserve. COVID-19 isn't going anywhere. There will always be some variant, and it's going to be something we have to live with. We don't need a new normal, we need to just go back to normal. Children should not be the ones to sacrifice their education to protect others. It poses little to no risk to children in addition to falling behind in education and increased risk of children experiencing anxiety, depression, social withdrawal, isolation, lethargy, fear, and headaches far outweighs the risk of getting severely ill with COVID-19. Please vote no to the proposed changes to the health and safety plan--
Eleven, Stephanie. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Gazarowski. I live in Langhorne, Pennsylvania, and I'm an auditor for banks. Good evening to the board and Dr. McGee. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I have two children that attend Tuwanka Elementary. As a parent, we hope that the schools that educate our children have their best interests at heart. Schools should be a safe place for our kids to learn and grow. I think we all agree that in-person learning is the best way for our children to learn and thrive. I personally chose to keep my kids home last year until April, when my husband and I were fully vaccinated. Once we sent them back, they were so much happier, they were so engaged, and Tuwanka did an excellent job of providing COVID from spreading throughout the classrooms. I was excited about the possibility of a semi-normal school year at the beginning of July when COVID cases in Bucks County were nil. However, Delta changed all of that. What's funny about that? No, I'm--
Hold on, please. Everybody, respect, respect who's at the podium. They have their time, their opinion, everybody's listening to everybody, let's be respectful.
More than 49,000 children have been hospitalized due to COVID-- More than 49,000 children have been hospitalized due to COVID since August of 2020. Between August 14th and August 20th of this year, the average daily hospitalization of children from COVID is 276. I implore the board to adopt their current Bucks County Department of Health recommendations, including three feet of distancing, universal masking for K through 12, and continued contact tracing. Dr. McGee told me during a Zoom call early on when the first health and safety plan was going to be adopted, that there could be 20 kids in a class unmasked, and no one would be notified. This is incredibly dangerous for an entire community, not just our kids, but for all the people at risk that they go home to every day. So again, I implore you to adopt those recommendations. We are in the home stretch until a vaccine is available for our children that are in elementary school. I urge you to be proactive and not reactive. Let us not wait until one of our children is seriously ill or worse. Masks are not tyranny. They are not oppression. They are a way of showing that we care about the people around us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
PJ Erlich, number 12.
Hi, I'm PJ Erlich. Live in Cobalt Ridge. Kids-- I have two kids that attend Miller Elementary School. I'm a structural engineer. I'm here tonight to ask you not to change the current approved health and safety plan and to keep masks optional for all students in the district. The revised health and safety plan says that guidance from federal, state, and local health agencies has changed, but none of those agencies are mandating masks. They are only recommending them. You might ask, why they haven't mandated them? It's because they don't have the legal authority to mandate them on anybody. The emergency declaration that was used to mandate masks last year by the state no longer exists. It was voted out by Pennsylvanians. Schools are required to provide an education to our children, and our children should not be sent home or segregated because they are uncomfortable wearing a mask to school. Last year, my kids often came home with snot-filled masks and sometimes even ones that were bloodied from bloody noses. Breathing through sweat and spit-filled masks all day is not healthy. Masks do psychological damage to children, teaching them that air is toxic and everyone around them is sick and not healthy. The choice to children wearing masks is a parent's decision and not a school board decision. Additionally, children with speech delays have a tough time communicating with their teacher when the teacher cannot see their mouths and they cannot see their teacher's mouth. This is also because-- also becomes an issue when they're learning to read. My first grader has a speech IED, and masks, no doubt, had negative impact on his learning last year. I think the people around here tonight demonstrate-- the amount of people here tonight demonstrate that parents are only trying to do what is best for their children. I'm asking you to do-- all I'm asking you to do is let me decide what is best for my child. Keep masks optional. Another item I'd like to address is a mass exemption form that was included with the revised health and safety plan. It lists a requirement for a doctor's signature. However, I don't see where a legal requirement is for doctor's approval. This form should be no more stringent than the state vaccination requirements. Per PA Code 23.84.B, children need not be immunized if parent, guardian, or emancipated child objects in writing to the immunization on religious grounds or belief of a strong war or ethical conviction similar to religious beliefs. Please revise this document to follow this, so it's not more stringent than a vaccine requirement. Thank you.
Number 13, Wyatt McQueen.
Based on a previous email put out-- Oh, yeah, sure. I'm Wyatt McQueen. I live in Feasterville, father of a kindergartner coming in. So I heard Dr. McGee talking about the COVID rate among 10,000 people, 96 out of 10,000. But what he didn't talk about was the rate among children, which is what we're talking about here, isn't it? Children do not readily acquire SARS-CoV-2. They don't spread it to teachers and children. This is-- there have been a number of studies done on this. I'm not going to beat a dead horse. This is the settled science. In rare cases where a child contracts COVID virus, it is very unusual for the child to get severely ill or die. Masking can do positive harm to children, as it can to some adults. Aside from causing elevated CO2 levels and headaches, forcing a child to wear a disgusting Petri dish on his or her face is cruel and deprives them of vital development. Children need to see facial expressions. How is a kid going to learn how to read and pronounce words if they can't see facial expressions and the body language of their teacher? They need to read body language. Children have stages of development that must be stimulated during that short window of time in which that sense is developing. Otherwise, that window closes and they don't develop these skills. Common sense tells us that if I exhaled cigarette smoke right now with a mask on, everyone in this room would smell it regardless of their masks. And a smoke particle is 10 times the size of a COVID particle. Even an organic vapor respirator, like I would wear to spray lacquer on a car, would not protect you. It would protect me, but it wouldn't protect you. So I hear the argument all the time that surgeons wear masks. Yeah, they do, in a completely sterile environment, but they would not perform surgery if they were carrying a virus. They're also trained on how to not contaminate their mask. Do you think a kindergartner is? Additionally, not a single study about the efficacy of masks has shown them to be effective at preventing the spread of viruses. Exactly the opposite, in fact. Every single study that's been done has shown that they do not work. They're not effective at spreading-- at preventing the spread of a virus. This is why Dr. Fauci, U.S. Surgeon General, the CDC, the WHO, and all the rest, in the beginning, they stated that masks wouldn't prevent the transmission of COVID-19. Although they flip--
Ten seconds.
--and later changed their recommendations, the science didn't change. I urge the board here tonight to reject the policy put forth by Superintendent Rob McGee regarding mask mandates. Leave it up to the--
Number 14, Kristina Noch.
Christian. Christian Hope from Langhorne, the father of a kindergartner to start school this year. I'm also urging the board to make masks optional on the grounds of the efficacy of a mask, right? Per the CDC guidelines, the mask mitigation efforts prevent the spread of COVID by 1.8%. So what problem are we solving by masking our children? If you extrapolate that out, .05 student will pass-- will not pass away from COVID by wearing a mask. So you want to shut down schools for two weeks because COVID's serious? I support that effort. But masking our children because we think we're solving a problem we're not is not useful. So I asked the board to change-- you know, to go with the original plan and/or come up with a better solution for solving this problem than masking our children. Thank you.
Number 15, Brett Mortensen.
I'm the superintendent. I think everybody here has pretty much hit-- you know, hit the nail on the head. You know, I don't think there's much more that I can add other than parents. Talk to your behavioral health doctors and find out what's really going on with these kids today, and they'll tell you right up front what's going on, okay? I got a six-year-old at home. I don't even know what to tell her anymore, other than it's okay. It's going to be okay. You're safe, because they are safe, and we know it. We know it. They're safe.
Sir, you're really--
We have nothing to worry about.
--supposed to address the board.
I guess the only thing I'm going to say right now is, you know, don't listen to the CDC. They're small compared to the parents out here. We're bigger, okay?
Good evening. Kim Gorman, Levittown. I am a mom, a teacher, and a-- I run a holistic practice with my husband. The past few weeks have been exciting and exhausting at the same time. When we left the last meeting with masks being optional and a full return to normal, I, as well as many others, were elated. My children were relieved and couldn't wait to start shopping for school. We all finally felt like things were getting better. Then last week, when we received the email with the updated recommendations, I was shocked. What happened? Well, apparently, guidance has been put out that appeared to be from the Bucks County Department of Health, yet that was not the case. Local hospitals, mainly Doylestown, drafted this guidance and added Damsker to it. Without going into details, the reasoning was that the hospitals may be overwhelmed if suddenly the unmasked children became ill with COVID. Those are my words. So now, they have a crystal ball looking into the future. I find a few things wrong with this. First, it has been repeated over and over and over again, most recently by our president, that children are not getting sick or dying from this virus. In fact, and I quote, "Most of the time, you don't even know they have it." Also, you have heard many times, children are not super-spreaders. There has not been any cases where a child has spread this to a teacher, adult, in the classroom. Second, most of the hospitals send their pediatric cases to CHOP and St. Chris's, so I'm not sure why they're so concerned. And as of right now, there is no waiting list to get into CHOP, but the CHOP psychiatric evaluation is on a four-week waiting list. Have you all been out and about this summer? Have you not seen the stands at baseball games, the Eagles game? People all over at swim clubs, parties, hanging out with friends? I attended the high school orientation today with hundreds of kids and adults sitting in a packed auditorium. Some wore masks, but most did not. But for whatever reason, next week, suddenly, the air is going to change, and we need to mask the kids, but only the K through eight kids. Where is the logic? When the letter came out, I received two texts from my kids. My ninth grader, "Mom, what does this mean?" And my seventh grader, "My dreams of playing basketball are over, and I'm not going to school now." Now, the seventh grader didn't even read the letter, but his sister did, and went into him and said, "You have to wear a mask, and I don't." That's awesome. I can and will not go backwards. Are we really going to do this to our children again? Are we really going to make them suffer again for a virus that doesn't affect them? Are we really putting the burden of those who are living in fear on our most precious population? Since when is it the responsibility of a child to protect an adult? The mental and physical toll this has taken on these kids will never be repaired. Our country is falling apart. Our world is falling apart. Governments have taken the rights of citizens all over the world. This will not end until we say it ends. I hope you will all stand strong on your previous votes--
Ten seconds.
--to keep this choice in our schools. My children will not be wearing masks to school ever. And P.S., school districts are not required to adopt any recommendations in the county-- by the county, in the state that mandated the health and safety.
I am a grandfather. I'm here because my daughter and their family are on vacation. She asked me to come here for her. She would like the masking be required, K through eight. And I also emailed the board 19 peer-reviewed scientific studies that talk about the fact that masks do not stop the spread of COVID. They do not stop it. They help to slow it down. It will escape a mask, but not all of it. It helps slow it down. That's all they do. They don't stop it. They slow it down. It's just one more preventative measure. If you need more scientific studies, I got 30 more on my computer. Peer-reviewed scientific studies that say masks slow the spread of COVID. They don't stop it. They slow it. So I can email those to you, and I thank you for your intention.
Number 18, Siri Drake.
Suzy Drake. That's all right. Hi, Suzy Drake, Neshamne High School teacher, alumni. I'm here representing the Neshamne Federation of Teachers. I would like to read a statement into record. The Neshamne Federation of Teachers strongly recommends the Neshamne School Board of Directors adopt a 2021 health and safety plan in accordance with the updated guidance issued from the Bucks County Health Department on August 23rd, 2021. We know that our students benefit from in-person learning, and all students and staff deserve schools to be open and their environments to be safe and healthy. Based on the current transmission levels in Bucks County, we recommend that all individuals, students, teachers, staff, visitors, should wear masks in schools K to 12 to begin the school year, regardless of the vaccination status. Per the CDC Order on Wearing Masks on Public Transportation Regardless of the School Mask Policy, masks should be required to be worn by passengers and drivers on school buses. The plan should include the CDC recommendation of maintaining at least three feet of physical distance between students and classrooms with additional layered mitigation efforts employed, such as hand washing, respiratory etiquette, cleaning, and disinfection. In addition, we encourage the district to adhere to recommendations from the Bucks County Department of Health concerning the isolation, quarantine, reporting, and contact tracing of staff and students. The following guidelines were outlined by the BCHD. Whether symptomatic or asymptomatic, any individual who tests positive for COVID-19 must isolate for 10 days as both symptomatic and asymptomatic individuals can transmit the virus during that time. Parents should report positive COVID-19 cases. Schools are required to report cases to the BCHD. Per the PA Department of Health, schools should continue to work closely with BCHD to complete contact tracing for individuals diagnosed or exposed COVID-19. As part of the contact tracing process, the PADOH and BCHD will continue to work with schools to gather information about potential close contacts. Finally, we support vaccination for all school staff and all eligible individuals 12 years of age and older. With the proper protocols--
Please, please, all right? Please, be respectful. We're all adults here.
With the proper protocols and plans in place, we can have a safe, in-person opening of the 2021-22 school year. We can do this.
Thank you.
Number 19, Jess Millward.
Hi, I'm Jess Millward. I have two boys and I live in Langhorne. First, thank you to the board and the administration for your dedicated service through an incredibly challenging time. I do appreciate how difficult your jobs have been through the past 18 months. I really do. I'm here because I want my kids in school, in person, full-time. I want the spread of COVID to remain minimal in our community, and I want for us to be able to operate eventually, like we did pre-pandemic. I believe that the best way to do this is to follow the guidance of the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and as of today, apparently, the Bucks County Department of Health. We should use masking, quarantining, and tracing in all schools, in all grades, K through 12, following CDC metrics. If the health and safety plan released on the 19th is to be voted on tonight, I have to ask, what information have you guys seen that makes you comfortable disregarding the advice of public health institutions? Dr. Sally Goza, immediate past president of the American Academy of Pediatrics, has noted that this is not last year's COVID. This one is worse, and our children are the ones that are going to be affected by it the most. When I hear epidemiologists, virologists, and pediatricians like her again and again pleading with school districts to implement mask mandates, I have to wonder why this debate continues. Masks prevent the spread of COVID, but everyone needs to be wearing them for them to be fully effective. We've seen the disastrous consequences of a laissez-faire approach to managing the Delta variant across the country. Quarantines, school shutdowns, serious illness, and more deaths. Florida just became the first U.S. state where daily deaths in the current wave have exceeded previous waves. Masks are a key component in avoiding all of that, and of keeping as many kids as possible in school, but they require a full buy-in. As Drexel University epidemiologist Dr. Usama Bilal notes, masks are not intended to be something that one person can choose to wear or not. Especially when the vaccination rate among 12- to 18-year-olds in Bucks County is at about, I think, 50%, back of the envelope calculations I did, why would we surrender one of our key weapons in fighting this virus? I think the best health and safety approach should be one that gets as many kids as possible back in school as safely as possible, especially in a public school district. Why would we prioritize the personal convenience of some over the public safety of all? I also urge the board to tie-- I also urge the board to tie the use of masks to clear metrics like the ones spelled out by the CDC, rather than an arbitrary date on the calendar. It is a more honest way to communicate the goals and intentions of safety protocols. Look, I have two boys, and they don't love masks, but they don't complain about them either. And it's not as if they are exceptionally stoic children. They're not. They recognize masks as a temporary but necessary part of stopping the spread of a virus that killed one of my family members way before its time, and that could land their immunocompromised friend in the hospital if it runs rampant. My hope is that you recognize that as well. Thanks.
There is no number 20. Number 21, Mike Gorman.
Hold on one second. Hold on, I got a query from the board. I didn't say that. I said I was going to say something. 10 minutes, 10 minutes. Do you need to respond? No, just because someone tends to sit and rest their eyes does not mean, does not mean they're... Let me tell you something. I've sat, I've sat with people for more than eight years, nine years, and I can be assured at every confidence to say that just because they don't look or appear to be paying attention, she has every effort that she has heard everybody at that podium, and she knows exactly what she's saying. Why are you making comments towards her? Okay? You sit, you sit.
No, no, I don't think so.
Let Mike speak.
Let everyone hear Mike. Let Mike speak.
We've asked numerous times for everybody to be respectful. This is not respectful. Do you want us to vote? Do you want us to take a vote on this matter or not? No, but we're asking you to be, we're asking you to be respectful. We want to get to the next speaker. We don't have to take a vote. We don't have to. No, I'm not threatening you. I'm just telling you legally, we don't have to take a vote.
Please, everyone, stop, stop, stop.
Don't vote against you guys when you're up for election.
Everyone, everyone, stop. Everyone, stop. Everyone, everyone, stop, stop. Tina, Tina, Tina. All right, let it go for right now, all right? Everyone, stop. Let's take a step back. Everybody, take a deep breath, okay? Let's proceed. I don't want to adjourn the meeting, so let's proceed and make sure everybody who wants to speak has a chance to speak, okay? Are you ready, Mike?
I am ready.
Go right ahead, sir.
I think, okay. First, I want to acknowledge the board and everybody. You guys have had a heck of 18 months, and I appreciate your service. For years, I used to say that teachers have it the hardest, and they've had it the hardest this past 18 months, so for sure. I am a, what I do for a living is I'm a chiropractor. I do functional medicine. I'm also on medical staff at the Institute for the Achievement of Human Potential, which is one of the leading places in the world treating kids with severe brain injuries, autism, and I see a lot of kids with vaccine injuries and different things. I've been doing that for 18 years. So I'm plugged into a network of doctors internationally, all over the world, and for 16 years, I've been getting all kinds of information about healthcare that we don't hear here in the United States. Honestly, it didn't really bother me that much or didn't affect me that much. Now, a lot of the information that I'm getting is not what we're all hearing, and my main concern is that there are a lot of, there's a lot of information out there that we're actually, you're not getting, parents aren't getting, that is actually really vital information for all of us to have. I don't have time to get into all that tonight, and you guys have done a great job hitting a lot of key points, but really, what I want to talk about is there's not a one-size-fits-all. If we're, whichever way you guys decide to go, I spent my whole career being in the middle where I'm doing alternative medicine here, and I'm working with all medical doctors over here, and they're bickering back and forth, and I'm going, "Guys, this is actually really simple. There's just a simple miscommunication. There's just some misawareness." And that's exactly what I feel like is going on with the entire COVID thing. So, you know, rather than have answers that can't be questioned, I have a lot of questions that can't be answered with all of this. And so, you know, I look at certain things, I look at how science works. Good science actually encourages debate. The best scientists and the best doctors want a debate. They go, "Please, bring it on. Let's talk about this." There's so many things are being suppressed around this entire conversation, and that's dangerous. You know, when I start sharing stuff, whether it's Facebook or talking to doctors, I'm quoting people from Harvard, Yale, Stanford, Oxford, the four, arguably the four top medical schools in the world, I get it censored on Facebook. When people have vaccine injuries from COVID, it's getting censored. This is the scariest thing I've seen in my entire 20-year career. So all I'm trying to say to you is, whatever we decide, you have an opportunity tonight to make history by actually saying, "Hey, we're going to use this, we're going to use Nishamani as, as the, as the control group, and we're actually going to, let us be mask optional," and then stack, look at the stats and measure them. If it starts getting out of control, you can always add things and revise them later. Like, let us be a leader in all of this. So if the only tool you have is a hammer, everything begins to look like it now, Andrew Maslow said. If the only tool you have is a mask, there's so much more we could be doing to help not only the situation, but help with people's immune systems, and if it's really that important...
Hi, my name is Alex Paul Langhorn-Barrow, mom of a three-year-old. This is a list of 11 dangerous pathogens found on a study of six masks of children that were worn on an average of 5.7 hours a day. Streptococcus pneumoniae, Mycobacterium tuberculosis, Niceria meningitis sepsis, Chyretitis and Granulomatosis, Amoxic encephalitis, pneumonia bloodstream infections, meningitis, UTIs, resistant antibiotics, food poisoning, Aschuria coli, Borreliar burgdorferi causes Lyme disease, Corynebacterium diptheria, then there's some more, but I don't know, they're long names. Meningitis sepsis. Anyway, half of the masks were contaminated with one or more strains of pneumonia-causing bacteria. One third were contaminated with one or more strains of meningitis-causing bacteria. One third were contaminated with dangerous antibiotic-resistant bacteria, bacterial pathogens. In addition, less dangerous pathogens were identified, including pathogens that can cause fever, ulcers, acne, yeast infection, strep throat, periodontal disease, Rocky Mountain spotted fever, and more. This brief info on health risks shows that there is way more than meets the eye, that there is way more risk than just strapping a mask on a child's face all day and expecting it to be for their safety. It is extremely the opposite. And I don't pay my tax dollars to cause harm to children. Take the masks off children now. Thank you.
There will be two more speakers called, and then we will have reached past our hour-time mark, and we'll move to board business. Go right ahead.
23, Chris Tiest.
Good evening, Dr. McGee, the board, and I'm happy to see all the very concerned parents out here. My name is Chris Tiest. I'm a 20-year resident of Langhorne. I live right up the street at the Swan Point Development. I have two school-aged children. My son goes to Maple Point here. My daughter goes to a nearby Catholic all-girls' school. I'm voting, I would like to ask the board to vote no to masks, and I'm asking the board to vote yes to parental choice. Where I have my opinion, and I'm not saying I'm right, we all have our opinion, so I respect somebody if they want to have their children do a mask, and I'm asking people to respect my opinion about, I have very specific reasons why I don't want my son... Fortunately for me, my daughter's school is going to be maskless. Her school is very close by, and there are some schools out there having the courage and using the wisdom. So God bless everybody here. I bless you with the courage and wisdom to do what's right, not what is political. So I just had a couple stats. There's been a lot of great stats out here. I can't really improve upon too much on what the great speakers have done before me. But one stat just really, you know, concerns me is, according to the American Institute for Economic Research, the number-one killer of death for children is suicide. Breaks my heart. So I'm afraid that, you know, I don't want to take COVID lightly. I lost a loved one to COVID earlier this year, so it's very, very serious and intimate to me. But I feel that the masks are draining resources from other areas where it's killing more children, like drug overdose, suicide. I have, I have children that have asthma, and the mask has an adverse effect to asthma, especially when they play sports, because the league that my son's in, he has to play, had to wear a mask during spring ball. Again, having asthma, there's a lot of adverse effects, not to, not to mention just the socialization aspect, which I think is not really commented as much as it should. So again, I respect everyone's opinion. I vote, I urge the board to vote no to mask and vote yes to parental choice. Thank you for my time.
Call our last speaker, please.
Number 24, Joshua Thomas.
Hello, I'm Counsel Rock alumni. I'm just kidding. I am a Counsel Rock alumni, but I live in Langhorne, Langhorne resident, carpet cleaner, and I would love for the option for us parents to make the decision if we can allow our children to wear a mask or not wear a mask. I personally believe it's child abuse. I really don't like the fact that they have to wear the mask. But again, I mean, if parents, again, if they want to choose for the way they want to raise their kid, if they want to put a mask on, that's, that's fine, but if for the others that they don't want to wear, have their kids wear a mask, then they should have that right to have that authority to send their kid without a mask, and I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our first period of public comment. As I explained earlier in the meeting, if the board does bring a motion to the table to deal with the issue of our Health and Safety Plan, those speakers that were not called in the first period that are on the list will be called to comment, and that period will not extend past 30 minutes. Any speakers that will be left over from that, that are on the list, will be called first in our second comment period, and that second comment period will last no longer than 30 minutes. Go ahead. Where did I put myself again? And I also want to thank those that only used the amount of time that they, they did. Normally, 60 minutes is 20 speakers. We're able to get 24 speakers in, so I appreciate that from the, from the audience. All right, that moves us on to routine matters. I want to make a master motion for 2.01 minutes, 2.02 treasures report, 2.03 check, register, and procurement card purchases, 2.04 bids, 2.05 investments, 2.06 exonerations. A master motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes eight to zero, since Mr. Allen had excused himself for a moment. Brings us to Section 3, Personnel Administrative, 3.01. Be resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following leaves of absence of administrative staff, and there are two names associated with the motion. Motion's been made, 3.01. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbeck. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Sullivan, time's up, I get to go home. 4.01, please.
4.01, retirements, resignations, and end of assignments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of certified staff, and there's six names on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Motion's been made on 4.01. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? At this time, I just want to take note that number five, Catherine Riley, is at 28 years of service here in Nishamani. We thank you for your many years, and please enjoy your retirement well deserved. 4.02.
Got a vote?
I'm sorry, got a vote. First is made, a second's been made by Mr. Kovitz. No more comments, questions, concerns, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Cirillo, could you read 4.02, please?
I'd like to make a motion for 4.02. Appointments resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for certified staff, and there are 13 names listed.
Motion's been made for 4.02. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes eight to zero. Mrs. Boyle, could you make a master motion on 4.0? No, you know what? Let's read that separately. Could you make a motion on 4.03, please?
Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following tenure status of certified staff, and there are 11 names.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. There's a motion made on 4.03. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Just want to congratulate those staff members meeting, receiving tenure status. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Allen, could you read 4.04, please?
Yes, 4.04. Leaves of absence?
Yes, sir.
4.04, leaves of absence.
Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following leaves of absence for certified staff, and there are four names on that list.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Motion's been made on 4.04. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Marington, could you please read 4.05?
Certainly.
Because I know that's right up your alley.
Yeah. Co-curricular appointments resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following co-curricular appointments for certified staff. There are a whole lot of names. There are a whole lot of names. 100? 157 names on that list.
Thank you, Mr. Marington. Motion's been made on 4.05. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. It's an unusual amount of names for the year. Dr. McGee, just want to give us a quick synopsis of, for the audience, of why we're okaying 157 people.
These represent the co-curricular activities, and they're mostly at the middle school level. So these are what students are involved in before, after school, that makes school more than reading, writing, and arithmetic, and they're all piled into this point, because this point is when we think we can run them.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any more comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Kovitz, could you read 4.06?
Sure can. I would like to make a motion to approve 4.06 co-curricular resignations. Resolved that the Shaminy School, the Shaminy Board of School Directors hereby approves the following co-curricular resignations for certified staff. There is one name on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. Motion's been made on 4.06. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Bowman, can you read 4.07, please?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion, 4.07, ancillary appointments. Resolved that the Shaminy Board of School Directors hereby approve the following ancillary appointments for certified staff, teaching a sixth section and department chairs. And there's 48 appointments.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Motion's been made on 4.07. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Hollenbach, 5.01, please.
I'd like to make a motion for 5.01, retirements, resignations, and of assignments. Resolved that the Shaminy School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of support staff. There are 18 names on the list.
Motion's been made on 5.01. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Just want to take this opportunity to note, we have one retirement at this high school with 15.7 years, a bus driver's been here 28.3 years, and another IA with 18.7 years. Thank you for your many years of service to the Shaminy and their students, and hopefully enjoy a well-deserved retirement. Motion's been made in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Sullivan, can you master motion 502 through 505?
I'd like to make a master motion for 5.
Mike?
I'd like to make a master motion for 5.02 appointments, 5.03 leaves of absence, 5.04 revised return some leave, and 5.05 ancillary appointments.
Motion's been made, master motion's been made on 5.02 through 5.05. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Boyle, would you like to make a motion on 6.01?
6.01, it's the Senior Citizen Tax Assistance Program. Whereas the Shaminy School District has provided a local tax assistance program for senior citizens since 1977, and whereas the district funding for this program has increased 10 times since its inception, including increases in both rebate amounts and income levels which determine eligibility. And whereas since 1977, the district has distributed more than 2.8 million to qualifying senior citizens in our community. And whereas the district continues to be concerned with the increased burden on senior citizens caused by escalating real estate taxes. And whereas the district recognizes that a number of senior citizens have become ineligible due to small increases in Social Security income over a number of recent years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shaminy Board of School Directors hereby approves the modification of the Shaminy Senior Citizens Tax Assistance Program to increase the maximum income eligibility from $24,999 to $29,999, and incorporate the following chart for tax rebate purposes.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Motion's been made on 6.01. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? I just want to thank Mrs. Boyle. This has been an issue that she has brought to the board many times. We have tried from time to time to adjust it, but it's been quite a while since we have adjusted it. You know, our seniors, you know, they're the ones that have been here forever. Their kids are long gone from the system, still paying taxes. And, you know, we don't want to create a situation where those are burdened. We have to, you know, tax them out of the district. Just remember, one day, you know, some of us are going to be exactly, you know, where they are now. So I'm glad to support this motion, and I want to thank Mrs. Boyle for her guidance and persistence in seeing that we get it done. So there's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero.
Mr. Piratano?
Yes, sir.
I'd just follow up to what you were just saying. I would like to make a motion to rename this the Irene Boyle Senior Citizen Tax Assistance Program.
I take that very, very well. There's a motion on the table to rename the title of item 6.01 to the Irene Boyle Senior Citizen Tax Assistance Program. May I have a second?
Second.
I held lots of seconds. Second by Mr. Allen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes nine to zero. Well done, Mrs. Boyle.
I would thank the board for supporting this measure that is so sorely, you know, overdue right now.
Well, for your 16 years of service here at the Shaminy, ending, oh, coming up in a couple months, it's one of the small things to recognize what it's taken to be on this board for 16 years. Thank you much for the service to the Shaminy and the Shaminy's children. That brings us to 6.02. Mr. Allen, settlement agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Piratano. 6.02, settlement agreement. I'd like to bring this motion to the table. Whereas the Shaminy School District has outlined a private and confidential agreement with the family of student number 7X3. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shaminy Board of School Directors hereby approves providing for the educational programming as specified in said agreement. Administrative files are attached.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. A motion's been made on 6.02. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Marington, could you read 6.03, please?
603, revised the 2021-2022 school board meeting calendar. Whereas the Shaminy Board of School Directors must adopt and publish a schedule of public meetings for the 2021-22 school year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shaminy Board of School Directors hereby adopts the attached revised 2021-22 school board meeting calendar, and there are file attachments.
Thank you. A motion's been made on 6.03. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? At this time, Dr. McGee, I assume that will be posted tomorrow on the website?
It'll be posted tomorrow on the website.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Bowman, Educational Development, 7.01.
Motion 7.01, Title I Plan Approval. Whereas the following Shaminy schools have been identified as Title I schools. Albert Schweitzer Elementary, Herbert Hoover Elementary School, Joseph Fertabar Elementary School, Tonwanka Elementary School, Walter Miller Elementary School. Whereas each school has developed a school improvement plan based upon a thorough review of the essential practices to advance educational programs and processes and improve student achievement. Whereas the action plans that we will be implementing address our specific school needs, include strategies that provide educational opportunities and instructional strategies for all students, and each of the student groups increases the amount and quality of learning time and provides equity in the curriculum, which may include programs, activities, and courses necessary to provide a well-rounded education. These plans address the needs of all students in the school, but particularly the needs of those at risk of not meeting the challenges, the meeting the challenging state academic standards. Whereas the school-level plans have been duly revised by the Building Administrator, Superintendent of Schools, and will be formally approved by the District's Board of Education per guidelines required by the Pennsylvania Department of Ed. And whereas the school-level plans addresses all the required components prescribed by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, meets ESSA requirements, reflects evidence-based strategies that meet the three highest levels of evidence outlined in the ESSA, has a high probability of improving student achievement, has sufficient LEA leadership and support to ensure successful implementation. Now therefore be it resolved, we request the Pennsylvania Department of Education grant formal approval to implement this school-level plans.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. A motion's been made on 7.01. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Cirillo, 9.02, please.
I'd like to make a motion for 7.02, out-of-district placements. Whereas in order to meet the educational programming needs of specific students, it may be advantageous to utilize the services of out-of-district providers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shaminy Board of School Directors hereby approves the out-of-district placements identified below.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. A motion's been made on 7.02. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Kovitz, would you do 7.03?
I'll give it a shot.
Take your time.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve 7.03, emergency declaration for COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the World Health Organization declared the current outbreak of COVID-19 a global pandemic on March 11, 2020. And whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Education has determined that the COVID-19 pandemic constitutes an emergency within the meaning of Section 520.1 of the Public School Code. And whereas the Board of School Directors has determined that the risks of COVID-19 present to our students, faculty, and community requires an extraordinary response. Now therefore, the Board finds and declares that the COVID-19 pandemic is an emergency within the meaning of Section 520.1 of the Pennsylvania School Code, and be it further directed as follows. Section 1, for the duration of said pandemic, but in no event for any period exceeding four years, the superintendent shall have the duty and the authority to develop a health and safety, excuse me, health and safety plan, subject to board approval, in a form and manner prescribed by the Pennsylvania Department of Education that ensures a minimum of 180 days of instruction, allowing for a minimum of 900 hours of instruction at the elementary level, and 990 hours of instruction at the secondary level, employing any combination of in-person, virtual, and distance learning as the superintendent deems appropriate to address the health and safety of students, faculty, and community, and the learning needs of students. Such instruction shall comply in full with the requirements of Chapter 4 of the Regulations of the State Board of Education, and with the curriculum standards published in accordance therewith, and be it further directed in Section 2. The superintendent is directed to submit to the Pennsylvania Department of Education the emergency instructional time template, as well as any other submissions required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and there are file attachments.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. I don't know if we need to get a prize for that, or...
If there is, I'll take what I can get.
Okay. Motion's been made on 7.03. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Not used to seeing you there on the end. Thank you. Motion's been made in second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Dr. McGee, could you just give a brief synopsis of the necessary need for this motion?
Sure. This began last year. We're reimbursed by the number of days and number of hours we have students in school. The small portion of the reimbursement for our total budget that the state gives us is based on that. Oddly enough, we were not allowed to count the remote days or the days that we were not personally in a school. By declaring the emergency pandemic through state code, we then are allowed to count what would have been last year, most of September, almost every Friday through the new year. This year, it's in place in the event things go the wrong direction, and we cannot have kids in school for a particular day, a particular period of time, that we can turn the live streaming on, do the remote learning, and still count that as an instructional day as we did last year.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Sorry for that confusion. All right, that brings us to the other board business part of our meeting closing format. At this particular time, Dr. McGee, during the superintendent's report, had outlined his recommendations to this board. We postponed comment to when we finish board business. At this time, I'd like to open the floor back up to Dr. McGee as some additional information regarding the need and our, that the recommendations are made in the format you did, address our, what I feel is a learning loss issue that we have, and the need to obtain the vast amount of our students back in our in-person learning. So if you want to expand on that and open up for any questions, I would appreciate it.
Sure. As far as learning loss, the ESRS, the stimulus money that we receive, the last chunk of it requires that we spend 20% on learning loss. The board has agreed to spend more than that, 25% on learning loss. And if you want an in-depth analysis of that, go to the last ed development meeting, where Ms. Burkhalder and Mr. Bowman explained how we're going to do that. And one of the ways is to develop what we call a multi-tiered system of intervention, where we use universal screening, universal testing for our K through 4 kids, actually it's K through 5, who's not on pace with reading, who's not on pace with math, and get them the supports along the way in a tiered system that get gradually more intense as we find out that the previous tiers aren't working. So that's in place at the elementary school, at middle school, and high school, where it continue with the after-school and before-school assistance, where students can get their, for lack of a better word, small group tutoring throughout the day. So that's as far as learning loss. So as far as the recommendations for the present health and safety plan, I'll open it up to board questions. Is there anything I need to clarify for the board before we get to other business?
We would... We reviewed some data previously when Mrs. Burkhalter gave her presentation to the board outlining the degree at which we measured how much this learning loss was. Could you expand on that just a bit?
Sure, as long as you don't quote me exactly.
No, I understand, I understand.
So roughly at the end of the year, we test, for lack of a better word, students in math, and we found that roughly 50% of them were not on grade level. Now, I don't know if they weren't on grade level before the epidemic or not. It's a new test. But and something similar with reading as well. So the goal is to fix that, and we're going to devote a significant amount of funding to it, to the tune of just under $2 million over the next three years. If we catch them early, get them up to grade level, math and reading, they have a much, much better shot. So whether that number is just because of the pandemic or not, because I don't have a number before, this process is beginning new. But our goal is to make sure that every child has got an individual plan, and we meet their needs somewhere in a tiered system. Everybody gets the intervention, then fewer, and then finally the peak with the most intense as it's needed. So hopefully this money over the last, over the next two to three years will make this work in every elementary school we have, and we'll have a better system of safety nets for kids in math and reading.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Does anyone else from the Board have any questions for Dr. McGee's recommendations? Seeing none? At this time, I want to bring a motion to the table. Be it resolved, effective September 1st, 2021 at 12:00 a.m., the Nishamani School Board of Directors hereby updates the District's Required 2021/2022 Health and Safety Plan adopted on July 22nd, 2021, with the following addendum. Which terms will automatically expire on August 1st, 2021? I'm sorry, August. That was great. Expire on October 1st, 2021 at 6:00 p.m.? And the July 22nd, 2021 plan reinstated in its entirety unless further board action is taken. The conditions of: One, any and all students and staff members grade K through 12 to wear masks while on district buses. Condition two, any and all students and staff members in grades K through 8 to wear masks while indoors at district schools. Condition three, any and all elementary school and middle school lunch periods to be observed, to observe space seating as designed and designated by school administration with grades K through 4 eating in their classrooms and grades 5 through 8 eating at classroom desks, but shall be able to use the traditional cafeteria lines to purchase or acquire their food. Condition four, option for parents to exclude their child through a medical exemption process designated by district administration. And number five, parents and guardians are requested to voluntarily report all illnesses, including positive COVID-19 test results, to the child's school administration. And be it further resolved, the addendum terms herein shall supersede or otherwise amend the plan where inconsistent from September 1 through October 1, 2021 at 6:00 p.m., unless further board action is taken. I've made a motion. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. First and a second's been made. Want to open up the floor for any comments, questions, or concerns? I just want to take an opportunity here to state my comments on, if that's agreeable to everyone. Thank you. In consideration of our administration's temporary recommendations on amending our July 22nd, 2021 Health and Safety Plan, many factors were involved in my own personal process. I referenced the statistical information, medical professional guidance, current status in Bucks County, and input from our residents. I've read material from the CDC and the PDE, reviewed recommendations of medical authorities. I've had many conversations with Dr. Dampster at the Bucks County Department of Health, as well as my own personal physician. Ultimately, for me, it comes down to this. When it comes to our responsibilities and oversight of this school district, our goal is to educate these children and do so in a safe environment, not only for their physical health, but their social and emotional health. Many things about this disease and its modalities are still being proven elusive. So in my opinion, we must rely on what we do know, recognizing not only guidance, but our experience. The student body as a whole has seen a decrease in educational progress, such that we're instituting the three-year learning loss program that Dr. McGee referred to. We know for the vast majority of students, in-person classroom instruction is best. The 12-year-old and up population in general has the ability to be vaccinated. The pediatric population has shown to be the least likely to develop complications from infection and appear to be the least likely to be infected. Even though the Delta variant in other portions of the country has seen increases in the pediatric population, it remains significantly less than other age demographics. Our school environment has shown to be one of the least likely areas for transmissions to occur. Our facilities continue to apply daily enhanced hygienic measures, and our HVA systems have been updated to add an additional layer airborne contamination control through bipolar ionization and filtration. So that leaves me weighing what Dr. McGee has already identified as a baseline for his recommendations. Comes down to what is a reasonable evaluation of risk for each parent to gauge in deciding whether or not to allow their child to intend in-person classroom instruction. In answering that question, we must all realize that while schools present overall one of the safest places for any child under any circumstance, there is never a time when 100% of the risk is removed from the equation. I believe the need to get as many children back into the classroom to start this year and gear us towards a normalized environment, a temporary 30-day mask requirement and lunch spacing mitigation for our K-day population is the least intrusive, most common sense approach to reach our goals. Additionally, due to CDC mandate, masks must be worn on buses for all K to 12 students and staff. I've come to this conclusion in full recognition that analysis of current Bucks County data doesn't support such, but with the need to get the most children back in the classroom environment, starting this school year with an application of caution, in my opinion, outweighs any strict reliance of a data-only approach to securing a proper education. However, going forward, without significant data from multiple areas of support, such as Bucks County statistics, area hospitals, actual student absences for confirmed illnesses, in addition to input from our administration, I will not support, nor will I bring to the floor, an extension of this temporary action. That includes my comments on the motion. I open up the floor to other board members.
I just have one question. Are we doing a roll call vote?
This will be a roll call vote.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. So hypothetical, should the number of cases per 100,000 and the transmission rate, let's just say perhaps today is the spike, and it goes down tomorrow. Can we change things and open up, you know, the mask optional type of thing? Can we do it sooner than October 1st? Yeah.
Are you talking eliminating the mask prior to October 1st?
Yes, that is, yes.
That's a good question, because the Board's about to pass a policy, a law, saying it's good in effect till October 1st. As superintendent, I don't know that I can undo that.
But could we change it if things changed sooner?
Could the Board change it?
Yes.
Absolutely.
So we as a Board can change it? Okay. Fair enough?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe, just to take it to the next level, I believe I can go the other way, though, as well. So School Board Policy 203 on communicable diseases gives the superintendent the authority to implement guidelines with the Department of Health to make sure.
And that's what we just voted on.
That, no, that would be an example. If it was a huge spike, I could say masks in the high school until the Board decided to choose otherwise. So I have that authority at the moment. I don't think I can undo what you did quicker than you undoing it.
Okay, all right. But together, we can, we can pretty, we can change it up or down as the data presents itself, correct? Yes, okay.
Current policy addresses if it goes up, like Doc.
Yeah, got it. Okay, thank you. The next question I have is, I know several folks mentioned tonight concern for their children being forced to wear masks. There's an emotional toll that it may or may not take on them. Do we have resources or have, has there been any discussion as to how our resources may be able to address that with our children? The children are students.
So we have plenty of resources. The question is the identification. So hopefully, we can, through our staff, through parents themselves, help us identify. The new MTSS program I had spoke about is not just academics. I totally ignored the social, emotional, behavior piece of it as well. So that is a piece as well. Identifying it is the key. If we know about it, we can begin to address it. But the key first is to get our kids to school, which is where all the resources are.
I have one more. And that is, we had, we have K through 12 on buses needing masks. As someone else said, they come off the bus, K through 8. Suddenly, the higher grades, they don't need to wear masks. What's that? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So K through 8 in the schools, fine. What happened to the upperclassmen, the 9 through 12?
So when the recommendation was conceived, it was K through 12 not in school or not on buses. On Monday, the solicitor ruled that the order of the CDC was binding. All right, so that's where that changed, I believe, in Mr. Parentano's motion. It wasn't part of the master plan. I do admit there's an inconsistency there, inconsistency there.
Sorry, there was one more. And there was one more, and now it's eluding me for a second. I won't hold things up. I apologize. If I think of it, hopefully I'll have a chance to get it out.
Anyone else?
I would just like also ask, just, you know, kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Kovitz asked about why we've decided not to require masks in the high school. Could you give us a more detailed explanation?
Sure. As you know, things changed throughout the month of July and early August prior to the Bucks County Department of Health changing. So there was always a backup plan, and this was the backup plan, to go with the unvaccinated schools, the schools that had unvaccinated kids in it. And then the high school would have had the 3,000 people there who were able to get vaccinated. They are probably the group that's most out and about to begin with, and they are the group that probably the most difficult to keep track of as far as what they're supposed to do as compared to an elementary class. They also, in my opinion, are able to manage their environment a little bit better, know what their parents want, know what they're supposed to do, know what they choose to do. And as we saw today at the high school, I probably saw more masks in the auditorium on people, but then not as many masks in the hallway. So it was situational in that particular. So that's the concept behind it, the concept behind it.
I just want, just again, a follow-up. Also, could you explain just why all along we've been following the Board of Health, Bucks County Board of Health recommendations, except on this one case? Could you explain that as well?
That is an inconsistency, and I have spoken to them, and I think they support the idea. I'm not sure where we went from the 15th to the 17th with total change, and then to the 23rd with another total change. So I still talk to Dr. Dampster about the most recent one. But that was the thinking originally within the county, within the superintendent's, that if something had to happen, it would be more of a smaller targeted address.
Okay, that's all I have.
So I, this will be quick. So Mr. Parentano, you mentioned that, or maybe it was Doc mentioned it, but the plan that you're putting forward, or the amendment that you're putting forward, that's based upon, not upon today's data that was received or the today's missive from the county, that's based upon the 17th's data or information?
The motion is based upon the recommendation of the administration. I chose to be the first to bring the motion to the table. I have my own personal interpretation of the 24th order. I don't like the fact that no medical doctor was on the call with the superintendents, that the county commissioners were on the call with the superintendents. I don't like the fact that the person that's the acting commissioner from the Pennsylvania Department of Health is a lawyer, not a doctor. I've, the particular order itself continues to call for recommendations. I've consulted with our solicitor. There is one area of that order that's questionable, but as Dr., I would like Dr. McGee to have an actual conversation with Dr. Dampster before we look at that order as something we have to consider in our plan. So at this particular time, I'm more concerned about the fact that the person running the Pennsylvania Department of Health, who supposedly sent this order down to the county, you know, doesn't have a medical degree. There's a certain, there's a certain degree, there's a certain, there's a certain degree of uncertainty for me to say, I think we should base that, our decisions, you know, that we do on that 24th, what came out on the 23rd evening actually was released on the 24th. So I would, before we consider it, I would like to give the opportunity for Dr. McGee to, you know, interface with Dr. Dampster and find out if it's anything more than just them recommending another level. That's just a concern for me. That's my own personal judgment. Any member of this panel, if they want, can bring that measure to the floor. I'm just saying, I'm not comfortable at this stage, you know, bringing a measure to the floor that uses that as ultimate guidance. I mean, that's my own personal choice, but, you know, any other board member can do whatever, you know, they think they want to do on it, as far as it goes. I was very comfortable with Dr. Dampster's change from the 15th to 17th. The hospitals in our area have been overwhelmed with infants and tot- I'm speaking now, okay? I'm speaking now, all right? Have been overwhelmed with cases of RSV in both infants and toddlers, which has strained, you know, what they claim has strained their resources. And they're afraid that since students have not been in closed settings for a long period of time, that just because outside, there's not a real incidence or any incidence really of spread, that once they get inside, could happen. I think that's a valid precautionary statement. If I'm a hospital director, I'm going to think the same thing, okay? My child, my oldest child, had RSV as a kid. He had it, he had it before there was a vaccine for it. Almost killed him, okay? He spent his first Christmas in a hospital, three months old. We spent 12 days at St. Chris's, so RSV's no joke. And neither is, you know, COVID. But regardless, at this point, I feel comfortable leading the Board with my motion off the recommendations that were formulated based upon the 17th's guidance. And with the addition that our solicitor informed us, we basically are mandated to accept the CDC mandate on public transportation. So that's out of our, that's out of our control. So that's how I come down on that. That's my own personal judgment.
Hearing none? At this time, as mentioned earlier, there are some speakers left over.
At this time, as mentioned earlier, there are some speakers left over from the first comment period. It's at 9:25. No, 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 we, we have to hear the speakers that were on the first comment period. So, so we're going to pick up where we left off. It's nine, at 9:25, it's going to be up to 30 minutes of the remaining speakers on the first sign-up list. So we'll, and after that, the, the board will vote. Let's go, go ahead and call the, call the speaker list.
Number 25, Rachel Carr.
Oh, hello. My name is Rachel. I am, I live in Trevoce. I have two kids, three and five, and I'm a nurse practitioner. I work in pediatrics in an intensive care setting. And I have for the past 12 years. I feel very strongly that the masking should be optional. And the reason for this, I think we've touched on all of the, that kind of like the data doesn't support forcing masks on kids. And I think the only thing really that I have to add is that I, I've been looking really at this a lot, and, and I've been looking through, you know, all the medical sites, and I cannot find one study done on kids with masks, period. The risk to kids, .2%. I mean, it's much less than flu. We never masked for flu. So in my opinion, we're not masking kids to protect kids. We're masking kids to protect adults, and I think that that's inappropriate. My daughter is begging me not to go to school because she doesn't want a mask. Her face breaks out in a rash, her ears hurt. She begs me not to go. I, I pulled her out of preschool because it became such an issue. We have a pandemic of mental health issues in children right now that has been completely abhorred. And I think that that is a bigger risk to our children than COVID. I think that, you know, in the state of PA, we have a 60 to almost 70% vaccination rate right now. That's not including adults who have immunity to it, a natural immunity to it. And, you know, the Delta variant is definitely more contagious, but there is not an increase in severity of illness in children. And so to put our kids through this, I feel like, you know, I know you said that data doesn't support this decision, but I feel like if you're taking the decision away from a parent, there should be data to support it. Strong data. I have listened to parents beg me, beg me, beg me, to, to listen to them about their children in an ICU setting, and the parents are almost always right. They know their kids, and I know that this is detrimental to my child, and I know that a lot of other people feel that way. So if you're going to take that decision from me and force me to do this to my, my kid, you know, I want data, I want science, and I want facts. And I don't want feelings, I want facts. And I, and I just think it's important to know that there's really no age, age that says that, you know, masking makes a big difference. We are one of the only two countries in the world that are masking kids under six years old. Most of the country, most of the countries are not. There are five or six countries that have never masked children. They had a Delta spike before us, and they had no increase in childhood severity of illness. The World Health Organization does not recommend masking children under six. And they recommend children six to 11, case-to-case basis, based on how it affects their emotional status. And so I think that that needs to be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Number 26, Joyce Boyd.
Hi, I'm Joyce Boyd. I would like to amend the mask mandate and make it optional. Like she said, there is not been a lot of data to support the reasoning behind this. Just looking at this as a health and safety aspect, why aren't we speaking about ways that we can make ourselves healthy and safe by supporting our immune system? By getting more vitamin D, more zinc, by eating a healthier diet? I mean, COVID tends to put you in the hospital because of respiratory issues, which are caused by inflammation. And half of the American diet causes inflammation, and it causes inflammation in children. So if you're worried about the health and safety of the children, then worry about their diet, worry about their vitamins, their nutrition, worry about keeping them around some germs. They can't avoid germs for the rest of their life, or their immunities will never build up. So putting masks on them is only just suppressing them. My child stayed home for two years. He's been virtual. He's dying to get back to school, and now I told him the masks are there. I only kept him home because of the mask, because he won't wear it, and I do not need him getting detentions in middle school over a mask. He needs to get education, and he's been home for two years, saying that he doesn't have any friends, that he wants to die. This isn't what I need for my child. I have another one that has an outstanding excellence award. She's brilliant, and she's begging me not to go to school. I'm just tired of it. It's very, very frustrating and upsetting that all I want is the best for my children. And you want to say that you, that high school doesn't have to because they are eligible for vaccination? That doesn't mean that they are. Okay? Just because they're eligible doesn't mean they are. And even if you are vaccinated, the CDC clearly says you can still contract the virus and you can still give it to other people. The only thing that it protects you from is not being hospitalized. So being vaccinated or unvaccinated doesn't make a difference in transmission. In all these cases that you're receiving, they're just numbers. How many of those cases that receive positive results are in the hospital, are having infections, are asymptomatic? These are just numbers. But there's no science behind any of it. I mean, we need to look at the actual science. Why is the CDC and the Health Board not promoting health and ways to prevent and strengthen and do all of that? That's all I have to say.
Number 27, Anne Murray.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Anne Murray. My husband and I have lived in Langhorne since 2000. We have six children who are Nishamani graduates, and our youngest is in seventh grade at Maple Point. We also have two grandchildren at Tawanka, kindergarten and second grade. I just want to say, we've really been thankful for the education our kids have received over the years. They've all been prepared for college and life, and we've just been extremely pleased. I also want to thank everyone on the board, and all the administrators, and all the teachers, everyone, for the many hours spent trying to work on strategies to best teach and protect our kids. I'm here tonight to ask that as soon as possible, masks not be mandatory. I understand, it sounds like you have your, your, your opinion and your mind made up that you're going to go with it. Go with it for a month if you have to, and then revisit it. I want to say, my husband is an RN, and my daughter is an NP, they have both been selflessly and tirelessly caring for COVID patients since March of 2000 at St. Mary's and in Philly. They and their colleagues, when they are going to care for a COVID patient, they put a very tight N95 mask on their face that has been fitted to their face. They go for fittings before they go in. This is the only mask that effectively guards against the virus transmission. N95s are fitted to their face, and they're not reused, well, they are reused because we don't have enough of them, but they're not supposed to be reused over and over and over. Dr. Michael Osterholm is a leading epidemiologist in the U.S. and a former advisor to President Biden's COVID Task Force. And he said on P, on a PBS interview on August 3rd, and I was watching this, "When you actually look at face cloth coverings, they actually have very limited impact on reducing the amount of virus you inhale in or exhale out." He goes on to say that studies show that an individual might get infected in a room 15 minutes by time and concentration of the virus in the room, and that the cloth mask may get you about five more minutes of protection. And yet, we are asking our kids, my kindergarten, my five-year-old grandson, my seven-year-old grandson, to wear a mask for eight hours because we, the science shows they'll get five more minutes of protection. I think a guiding principle we need to keep at the forefront of this discussion is that we adults should be the ones sacrificing for our kids, rather than making our kids sacrifice for us. We do not know if there is a damage for wearing a mask all day. And I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Number 28, Dave Monaco.
Good evening. My name's Dave Monaco. I'm also an educator. I have a master's in public health. My background's in behavioral health. You know, I heard a lot of, a lot of great information provided, a lot of good thoughts and insight, and I do think I share a lot of opinions, right? I want to be over this pandemic. I would like our students to attend school unmasked. I would like our students to attend fully. However, this is still a global pandemic. We are still fighting a virus that our bodies are not prepared for. We are working at it. We've had glimmers of hope early this summer. I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to some positive things going forward, but until we can actually beat this pandemic, we all need to work together. So for that reason, I am disappointed with the previous plan. I'm disappointed with the, with the inadequate plan that is currently in place. Okay? We need to monitor this. We need to keep it from running around unchecked. We need to prevent our hospitals from filling up, so that way, if one of us are in a car accident or have a heart attack, we can actually get to the hospital. Okay? But ignoring the recommendations of experts in a global pandemic is appalling. Virus transmission is not a matter of opinion. Okay? We can have opinions about the inconvenience of wearing a mask, about how tired we are of this pandemic, but it doesn't change how the virus is spreading. Okay? I have some ideas that I would like to add, and if you can amend them at this point, I don't know. But I would like to make it, all staff, all students, everyone in the building, should be masked until we get further guidance. Okay? Weekly testing of staff should occur, and there should be an option for students to get tested as well. All positive cases should be reported, close contacts notified, in case there are health concerns. Okay? And then if need be, stay home until the virus is out of your system, until you are cleared to return. I also would like the school district to purchase tents so that students could have classes outside, where we know the virus doesn't spread, right? You guys want science. We know it doesn't spread very well outside. So we get tents, and we could actually have the students outside, unmasked for class.
Please, please, people.
The statistics of a lightning bolt hitting a tent, okay. Great. Well, hopefully, it's not your kid, man.
Sir, please, sir, please.
Breaks if we can do this and have protections from the sun and the rain at the same time. Okay? We know that the multi-tiered systems of protections that were put in place last year helped keep schools open despite all the pushes back from, from experts still looking at how this virus is spreading. Okay? And I'm just going to wrap up by saying, as I said, I'm disappointed. My wife and I have fought over public and private for years. I had won that battle up until a few weeks ago.
My name is.
Hold on, hold on.
Number 29, Joanna McGee.
My name is Joanna McGee, and I live in Langhorne. As a Nishamani parent, I expect my children's schools, elementary and secondary, to be safe learning environments. It is irresponsible to not follow all CDC recommendations in all Nishamani schools. If one person needlessly gets sick with this virus, it is one too many. This Delta variant is more contagious and deadly. Do the right thing and protect all your students, faculty, and community with something as simple as masking in all schools K through 12. I want to remind everyone that we are still in a public health emergency. There are people dying from this illness. Mothers, fathers, aunts, uncles, teens, kids are dying from this illness. I wear a mask to prevent other people from getting sick or dying. We need to work together to end this global pandemic. Do what the CDC recommends. Get vaccinated, wear your masks, social distance, and we may be able to relax COVID guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 30, Desiree Mintz.
Desiree had to leave because she had to put her kid to bed? Yeah, because it's going on so long, because we all care. Can I speak in her place just for a minute?
Who are you?
My name, it's on, my name is James Powell.
Is he on the list?
I live in Twin Oaks.
You got to have, we're appearing strict rules this evening. Oh, you, you do that, you are on the list? Oh, I asked, what number are you? Number 30 is number 29? You didn't sign up. You don't have right, we're, we're observing, we're observing rights, the policy at the podium. Okay? Call next, call the next.
Number 31, Daniel Adler.
Hello, Daniel Adler, Middletown Township.
Go right ahead.
I would just like to hear more about how we, how the public will be informed following Superintendent McGee's discussions with Dr. Damsker. With the, with the school, you're, you know, beginning very soon. I just wasn't sure how the public would be kept in the loop and what the process would be if there are any other changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
32, Dana Felcher.
Hit the button there.
Hi, I'm Dana Felcher. I live in Langhorne. I am an LCSW, Licensed Clinical Social Worker, which means that I am a mental health provider. As a mother who has children who are too young to be vaccinated, as well as a high schooler, I have concerns about letting the high schoolers choose whether to be masked. I don't understand why, when we feel that it's important to have the K through eight mask, which I agree with, that it's reasonable to set up a situation where the high schooler can bring COVID home to their younger siblings who don't have the ability to be vaccinated. I, I understand that my own children can be masked, even if it's not required. However, I'd like to know if there's going to be alternative seating for lunch for those who are being masked, because if the children have the choice to be masked in the high school, and not everybody is going to be masked, putting them next to a group of kids who are not masking or observing recommended precautions puts them at risk that they are not choosing to be a part of, because not every adolescent is choosing to kiss their sick boyfriend or girlfriend, as it happened last year. And although the ones, because they were wearing masks, they were protected from the teenagers who made these kinds of decisions, as teenagers will, because they're teenagers. I'd just like to know what option there is in terms of alternate seating. My children, including my kindergartner, all wear masks. They have had no side effects to wearing the mask. They don't complain about them because they understand this is just what we need to do for now, that it's not a forever situation. It's not masks that cause mental health issues, but rather the isolation that happens when schools have to close because COVID is a concern. That isolation is what's, what's important to avoid, and wearing masks would be one way to help prevent schools from having to close and make that isolation happen. I ask that you require masking for all vaccinated and unvaccinated in all schools from kindergarten through 12th grade, and that if you're not going to do that, that there would be an alternative place for eating for those who are choosing to be masked. And I just feel that this is a way to protect not only our children, but also teachers and staff as well. Thank you, and I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Number, number 33, Teo De Laas Harris.
Hi, Teo De Laas Harris with, living Langhorne. Compliance is not the same as safety. Science requires us to continuously ask questions, not blindly follow it. That's what religion demands. On the question if COVID presents a significant risk to children, the answer today. today, based on the science, Mr. Perattano himself discussed, the answer is no. Zero healthy kids have died from COVID, especially in PA. On the question if loosely fitted masks prevent the spread of COVID, today, based on the science, the answer is no. Study by the University of Waterloo found cloth mask efficacy to be as low as 9%. Would we seriously encourage students to use condoms to prevent pregnancies and STDs that were 9% effective, or even 50% effective? Using current COVID logic, we would tell these students, go ahead, it's safe. On the question if schools are a source of community spread, today, based on the science and data Dr. McGee himself shared, schools don't increase community spread. This presents us with three options. One, put compliance above safety and mandate masks, which is what we're here to do. Two, put COVID safety first, follow the science, and use N95 masks strategically, as several speakers today have. They seem comfortable with the protocol to protect themselves, and they can do it for their kids as well. Three, put children first, lead with risk tolerance, and make masks optional. School board members, you are once again opening Pandora's box when you commit to COVID mitigations like masks. COVID-19 will continue to spread as it has in Israel, 80% vaccinated and masked, New Zealand in lockdowns for 18 months and masked, and most recently Oregon, who just this afternoon instituted an outdoor mask mandate. Their case count is now at an all-time high. Unfortunately, this will soon come to PA, and we will be back here in the fall debating other mitigation measures that don't stop community spread, like hybrid learning and school closures. In your rush to put cloth masks on non-contagious students, you're missing an opportunity for targeted mitigation of the most vulnerable while operating normal school, something that will serve us well during the next wave. As an example, have you thought about surveying staff and parents to identify health issues and implement targeted medication for them, instead of my kid, who is not infected? If not, why? The performative safety of cloth and medical masks is a step backwards. The proposed plan will further erode public trust when it doesn't work, further divide this community, expose the vulnerable to the virus, because the masks don't work, and damage the emotional, social, and educational needs of all those not at risk. As someone previously said, we elected you as leaders. Please, 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 lead this community towards risk tolerance and targeted protection of the vulnerable. We can't wait on agencies like the CDC, who is so risk intolerant that they don't recommend eating raw cookie dough or more than true alcoholic drinks. Finally, why are those calling for mask mandates today not wearing N95s? They demand we do everything possible to stop the spread while wearing the least effective mask themselves.
Number 34, Randy Miles.
Hit the button there, Mr. Miles.
My name is Dr. Randall Miles. I'm a research scientist in Langhorne. I have three kids here. I'm a physicist, not a medical doctor or anything, or an epidemiologist, but I'm able to read literature. I'm not afraid to look up the science. And one thing that is pretty obvious, and a lot of people have confirmed, that the science is not definitive that masks do anything good for kids. I've sent each of you a document that summarizes 50-plus resources that talk about how masks actually can be detrimental, but there's no definitive research that shows that they are actually helpful in preventing COVID-19. There's plenty of evidence that shows that it affects breathing, oxygen deprivation, reduces immune strength, and can affect the cognitive development of kids. Facial recognition and body language are things that we know are going to be detrimental, are going to be impacted negatively by masks. So there's the things that we think, that we fear, might be caused by the virus, and that the masks might help, that's all conjecture. There's no definitive truth on that. But there is definitive, we know for a fact that it's going to impact kids in their education. And the thing is that the recommendations come down to us from government officials. They're looking at a whole lot of different factors. Our job, or your job, is to look at the education of the kids, not all the other factors that the health recommendations are giving. So my urge for you is to consider the education of the kids, not the fear that our culture has for the pandemic. The resource I sent you was from the American Institute of Economic Research, and it summarized, it says, "Children do not readily acquire SARS-CoV-2. It's a very low risk. They do not spread it to other children or teachers, or endanger parents or others at home. It is a settled science. In rare cases where a child contracts COVID virus, it is very unusual for the child to get severely ill or die. Masks can do positive harm to children, as it can do to some adults, but the cost-benefit analysis is entirely different for adults and for children, particularly younger children. Whatever arguments there may be for consenting adults, children should not be required to wear masks to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Of course, zero risk is not attainable. I urge you to choose education of our kids over unfounded fear, and a fraction of the percent of the kids that be transmitted the virus is extremely low impact on their health."
Thank you.
Number 35, Linda Ostowicz.
Hi, I'm Linda Ostowicz. I'm a media professional. I work in news. So I just want to bring up a couple of things that we haven't really talked about, which is what the masks are doing. So conjunctivitis is up, bacterial infections from masks are up, fungal infections are up, dust, form fields. We know asymptomatic spread does not occur. Healthy kids have zero risk, according to the CDC, which everybody keeps citing. Behavioral health issues, we know we have. Social isolation, anxiety, depression, unable to recognize nonverbal language. What are the things we don't know? We don't know about young kids. Are they going to keep the mask out of their mouths? Special education kids, kids with asthma, allergic rhinitis. What studies have been done on kids wearing masks for eight hours a day? What do we know about this? So if we're going to look at science, I brought a bunch of stuff with me, but you guys seem to be really in the know, which is awesome. So Laboratory at the University of Florida did a whole bunch of studies on these protective masks. They found everything but COVID-19 on them. So yeah, that looks good. John Hopkins reported that there was 48,000 children. They found zero COVID deaths. Zero! 48,000, just saying. National Institutes of Health, that's Fauci's house, right? Okay, so no evidence of children infecting teachers was found. One secondary case in a high school, but they don't know where he was the night before. And then at the current time, children do not appear to be super-spreaders, and they're going to keep surveilling that. That's the NIH, okay? Delta variant, natural immunity, 700% greater protection than the shot. I just want to put this out there, guys. These are facts. My kid is six. He's six years old. He's got a rash. His ears are all infected. Why? Why are we doing this? You know the data doesn't support it, and yet you want to do it for a month. I don't understand. And I'm pissed.
Number 36, Paul Monahan.
Hello, Paul Monahan, Langhorne, Pennsylvania. I have four kids in the Nishamani. I'm up here talking a little bit unprepared today, because my daughter asked me to. She doesn't want to go to school wearing a mask. I don't really blame her. I don't want any of the kids going to school wearing a mask. I agree with some of the speakers before, and I think it's abuse. I don't, not sure how in good conscience you could listen to the facts that some of these people have presented, have zero facts to support your recommendation, and still recommend it. I think unfortunately, you seem like a really nice guy. I know you put the time in, because I see the emails, I see how many pages it is, and I know that takes time and effort. And it saddens me, unfortunately, it seems to me, like you are not putting our children first. You're, I'm not sure where your decision-making is coming from, but it doesn't seem to be coming from common sense. It doesn't, it's obviously an emotional situation. People are very emotional about the whole thing, including myself. And honestly, just hearing everything tonight, and listening to you and that recommendation, it seems to me like you are not putting our kids first. And if that's the case, I think you should resign. And that's really all I have to say. So thank you.
Number 37, Jennifer Brown.
Good evening. Jennifer Brown, Langhorne, Pennsylvania. So, what I do know is, these masks, the cloth masks, a lot of kids that I am seeing today are wearing them like this. Or they're chewing on it, you know, playing with it. So it doesn't serve that good purpose. They are right, though. The N95 masks that are fitted to the face, they are the only masks that are protective against COVID-19 and any other microbes. I think the best thing that we can do for our children is to protect them, but there are other ways to do it. We can give our kids vitamins. They have been shown to be effective against fighting disease. Probiotics. Probiotics is what introduces good bacteria into your body, which is, you actually need to sustain life. You have about 10 million microbes in your body as we speak right now. You need to sustain, you need that to sustain. So, where was I? Sorry, I'm not good at this. As of right now, that's what we can do to protect our kids. Stay up to date with immunizations, especially the flu shots. Studies have shown, and it has been on the media, that the flu shot has protected against COVID-19 serious complications. And right now, they're predicting that the flu season this year will be nasty one. So I do urge parents to consider the flu shots, and that could help against, you know, preventing serious complications from COVID. I don't think that the masks are really doing much. Again, kids are not wearing them correctly. So that is the issue that I'm seeing right now. So yeah, I am against the recommendation to mandate the masks. I think that parents, they know what's best for their kids. We've known since they were born what's best for our kids. Thank you.
Number 38, Ying Ling Chai.
Hi, Ying Chai, from Langhorne. I have two children that go to Nishamani School District. Thank you to all your hard work in identifying learning options this fall, and all your dedication to the needs of the students over the past 18 months. When I look back at the 2020-21 school year, it was a very challenging year balancing mental, social, and emotional needs of our family with this, with associated with the pandemic. However, I always felt that the Nishamani School District had the best interests of our students, teachers, staff, and the community in mind. You made it a goal for our students to get back to school, while minimizing the risk and prioritizing their health and safety. We could not have been able to accomplish that without all the tireless work of all of you, the Nishamani teachers and staff. I'm very proud to be part of this community. I want to also thank you for updating the Nishamani School Health and Safety Plan based on new information, and to require masks for grades 8 to 8 for all students and staff inside and on buses. Bucks County is now at a high transmission rate. The federal CDC, state PA Department of Health, and local Bucks County Department of Health, along with the American Academy of Pediatricians Hospitals, are all recommending to require masks while indoors regardless of vaccination status for grades K to 12. Given the new information and guidance from all levels and experts in the field, I strongly request that you update the health and safety plans aligned with the CDC recommendations, including masking for 12, K to 12, and contact tracing. Lastly, Nishamani School District's mission statement, which is, "The Nishamani community builds future by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner." And some excerpts from the district belief include, "People have a responsibility to themselves and others. All people have the right to a safe and healthy learning environment. In these challenging times, it's so important that we all come together with assured vision and mission for the community." Thank you for showing and role modeling our mission and beliefs for our children during these difficult times. I hope that we can continue to teach our children about being productive citizens, having empathy for others, helping to simply wear a mask to protect each other, and creating a safe learning environment. Thank you.
Thank you. There is, this will be our last speaker for this commentary.
There's two.
There's two?
There's two last ones.
There's two. Go right ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Liza Vabishewich. I'm a financial professional with over 15 years of tax auditing and investigating experience. I was born in a communist country, and without much choice. But now I'm a proud American, and I'm pro-freedom, and value this freedom very much, and I'm for pro-parental choice. I currently have three children in the Nishamani School District. I am concerned with the future of our children and their overall well-being. I strongly believe that it should be parents' choice if the children's children are to wear a mask or not. As Dr. McGee showed us in his report, the numbers are low, and children's hospitals are not overloaded with COVID cases. I do not see any valid reason to recommend masking children. We all have access to data that proves that children are at very low risk. In fact, everything that I have read shows how detrimental masking for younger children is. Besides bacterial infections, that strive in warm and moist environment masks cause some serious psychological damage to our children. We are social beings. Facial expressions are crucial part of our children's learning and understanding. Children will suffer psychological damage when they're unable to communicate adequately with others. Being unable to recognize emotions adds to the psychological suffering. Reducing oxygen could cause irreversible damage to their brain hardening logs. Masks fuel anxiety and they cause stress. There is no benefit for children to be wearing masks, but masking them, but masking them where one, but making them wear one has an adverse side effect, and in some cases causes, like I mentioned, irreversible damages. I beg you to vote against mandatory masking of children, because the damage of masking them is too great. And I ask you to give us, the parents make that choice, based on all the statistics that we heard here, everything that everyone knows and read. We ultimately, the parents, should make the choice for our children, whether they should wear a mask or not wear a mask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 40, and the last, Milan Vabishavich.
Hi, I'm Milana. I'm a student of Prequessing Middle School. I was so happy to go to fifth grade last year, but masks ruined the whole experience. To start off, masks were a big distraction to my learning. Like, my teacher could not, barely hear the students in the back of the classroom, like me, and it was hard to hear the teacher also. My head and my classmates' heads would start hurting, because we did not have enough air to breathe. The worst part was not having any mask breaks that were promised to us. Most kids did not even wear masks correctly. What was the point of even wearing one, then? And also, if high And also, if high schoolers are able to decide for themselves, my parents are sure can decide for me. I personally do not want to wear a mask, wear a mask, and guarantee lots of kids agree with me. In the end, masks should be optional. Thank you.
Alrighty, at this time, the list has been exhausted for sign-up speakers. I made a motion to, for, to adopt the superintendent's recommendations. It was seconded by Mr. Sullivan. So at this time, I'm going to call for comments, questions, or concerns. If there's any other member who wants to add any additional comments, questions, concerns before we move to a vote, now's your time. Seeing none, Donna, would you please call a executive roll call, please?
Certainly, Mr. President. Mrs. Bowman?
No.
Mrs. Bowley?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbach?
No.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Arrington?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
No.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. Motion passes five to four.
Five to four.
This brings us to our, this brings us to our period, our board comment period, second board comment period. This is our second period of public comment. If you want to approach the podium, it's for a half an hour. You'll have three minutes. There is no sign-up list for a second period of public comment. Is there anyone that wants to approach the podium for second period of public comment? Same, same rules apply. You have three minutes.
What was the point of us coming here and voicing our opinions as parents, concerned parents, who have the right to make decisions for our children, whether to vaccinate them or not to vaccinate them? We have the right. But why we come here? If you already stated your opinion, you guys decide everything, it looks like it's already decided beforehand. Because whatever we said meant, look how many people were on the opposite end of what you voted. And didn't make any, any difference. You still voted the way that you wanted to. What was the point of us coming and voicing our opinion?
Comment, there'll be board comment after, after you're done. We answer in board comment. That's no, no problem. Totally understandable. Does anybody, go right ahead.
I just want to state, I'm in the medical field, my sister's in the medical field. I just texted her because she's at the hospital right now, and I said, "How many COVID patients do we have?" Lower Bucks, Saint Mary's, and Jefferson have zero. We need to stop watching the media, CNN, or whatever else you guys watch, and start listening to parents that know their kids and understand. My kid plays ice hockey. Other few parents here, their kids play ice hockey. We don't have to wear masks. They've been doing it this whole pandemic. Shockingly, no one's gotten COVID. But in school, we have to wear masks incorrectly. It doesn't work. Doesn't work.
Anyone else want to approach the podium for public comment?
I think, thank you for allowing me to talk again. I'm very disappointed in everybody that voted against parental choice. This is a defining moment for each of you sitting there. You know, it takes courage to do the right thing. The path of least resistance is usually not the right thing to do. I believe, and I could be wrong because I don't know, know you all, but I can, I can just tell you what I feel. I feel this was a very political decision. I, I feel your minds were made up before the vote happened. I feel like you're not taking my children's health and well-being, well, my daughter's in private school and there's a reason for that, but she, she went through Neshamie. She went through Maple Point, and when we made, we made a decision to move her to a private school. You're, you're making it hard for me not to consider moving my son to private school. This is a defining moment for you all. You all are leaders in the community. It takes courage to do the right thing. The path of least resistance is so easy to do. I'm just very disappointed for everybody that did not vote for parental choice and voted for the mandatory mask mandates. I just needed, I felt I had to, had to say that with all due respect.
Hello, my name is Rio Prisco. I just want to say, I moved to this district because it was a good school district. I moved my family here. My son is going into kindergarten. He's going to, he's five. I don't know how you can get a five-year-old to wear a mask. And I'm very disappointed because I never thought this school district would do that.
Hi, I spoke earlier. My name's Stephanie Gazarovski. I applaud your decision to implement actual health guidance and to keep our kids from getting sick. My kids were, my daughter was in kindergarten when March of 2020 happened and she, she left. You know, we sent them back in April. She is six, and now she's just seven, and my son is eight, and they are thrilled to go to school if masks are, are in place because they know that masks keep them safe, they know that masks keep other people safe, and they know that it allows them to stay at school in person and have that experience. All these people keep talking about depression and isolation. Those aren't caused from masks. Those are-
They are caused by masks.
No, they're not. They're caused by-
Audience, 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 please. This is, this is her time to speak. You've all had a chance. This is her time to speak.
I wear a mask for eight hours.
Was that a threat?
Miss, 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 please. Nobody interrupted, nobody interrupted other people's, this is her time to speak. It's not a debate period.
Listen, you all have your own opinions about masks, but I can tell you from my own experience with my children, it's not a big deal. You are all making it the big deal that it is. It is not. Yes, but the whole reason that masks work is because everyone is wearing them. If just-
Stop, 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 stop. Miss, miss, address the board, not the audience, please. I'm sorry.
As I started saying out, I appreciate you making that decision to keep our children safe so that we can all stay in school and that they can get the best education that they can by being in person with their teachers. You, I don't, I'm sure that everyone has seen the news of what has happened in Georgia and Florida and all these kids getting sick and getting quarantined because mask mandates were not in place. So I just would like to say that I appreciate you making this decision and trying to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to approach the podium? Go right ahead, sir.
I just wanted to say, you know, this is a slippery slope. If you guys, and this is everybody, you know, that's going on all over the country, if you start doing this and taking away parents' rights, that turns into, the next thing's going to be, the vaccines are going to be mandatory. I treat kids with vaccine injuries. We start doing that, you guys have no clue how much that is under-reported and how many problems there really are. And that's the direction that this, they want to take this. And you guys have the responsibility to do this. I'm not going to get into all kinds of corruption and fraud, but the CDC and all these groups, it's unbelievable when you start going down that road. This is not the place or the time for it. I'm not going to do that. I'm going to be respectful. But I really want you to understand that this is a really important defining moment, as a few people said, because this, next thing you know, it's that. Next thing you know, it's, parents don't have a choice for other things. Next thing you know, they don't have a choice for other medical procedures. And this is the beginning of that, and I just want you to get that you have a responsibility for that. That being said, one of the things that would be somewhat meeting in the middle ground, and I said this earlier before you even voted, you know, the idea of, hey, you can't just have medical exemptions because then they make it very difficult. People ask me all the time as a chiropractor, "Can I write the medical exemption?" No. But a lot of my medical doctor friends are like, they're scared to write medical exemptions because of all the pressure and all the stuff that's going on. So what ends up happening is people that really need them don't get them. So the only fair way to do this is you have your recommendation that, that, you know, keeps you, your butts covered, so to speak, and then you say, just like vaccines, you can have philosophical, religious, or medical exemptions. And if we could all give an exemption, it takes you off the hook legally and every other way, and it still has you, you know, agreeing with the Department of Health and whatever else had you make your decision. To me, that is the only fair way to keep everybody happy. Otherwise, you're going to have a lot of very disgruntled parents, and worse than that, we're disgruntled and upset because of the impact it has on our kids. And people are going to talk about their kids. I think you just hit the nail on the head, the last speaker. She knows her kids, so she knows it doesn't affect her kids. We know our kids, and we know the impact it's having. So, that, that's, you just, thank you, you just agreed with us. That's our whole entire point. We know our kids better than a doctor, better than you. And my other, last question is, why don't we, did you ever guys ever take a vote of the entire school and what they want to do? Because I guarantee, if you did that, you would get more people voting on our side than the other side.
Go right ahead.
Matt Taylor. So I just wanted clarification on what was just voted on, and Mr. Parentana, I believe you said that you essentially are giving your, I don't know, I need clarification on that.
I'll get it.
You said after 19 days of school that you would not vote to continue this again. So, okay, yeah, thank you. I just want clarification on that because that, that kind of flips it.
I just wanted to come back up here. I had one more concern that I've heard quite a bit. It seems that we're putting so much weight on everyone being vaccinated, and as a person of the 70s, I had my measles vaccine, and in the 80s, I still got the vac, I still ended up getting the measles. So, the sad reality is, we can all get vaccinated, it doesn't mean it's going to prevent anyone from still getting it. I think we're forgetting that.
Does anybody else want to approach the podium? Go right, go right ahead.
I am very disappointed that I have to wear and struggle with a mask at school when my ninth grader sister could make a decision for herself when my mom can't make one for me. If you, if you want your child to wear a mask, tell them to wear a mask. My mom doesn't want me to wear a mask, so I don't want to. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to approach the podium?
I'm Dan McCoy from Langhorne. I will say, my kids are absolutely thrilled to be going into school-
Please.
-wearing masks. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to approach the podium?
Yeah, Paul Monahan, again, and I would just like to say that everybody that voted to go ahead with this recommendation should immediately resign. And I can't even put into words how disappointed I am. My, my daughter's in tears right now. And you have, you, you guys are pandering to the fear of a few loud people, and it makes no sense. You, you guys aren't using common sense. There's a couple people here that have N95 masks on with a quarter-inch gap in between their nose and the mask. I'm not a scientist, but I know a piece of hair on your head is about 4,000ths thick. A pathogen is tens of thousands times smaller than that, going through every fiber of whatever these people are fancy mask patterns are, are wearing. Your, your people's masks aren't doing anything. I can, I can tell you, like, some people with a N95 mask, it's obvious they weren't trained on how to put them on. It's not, I just don't understand, and, and I'm so disappointed. And I would say again, everybody that voted to do this should immediately resign. I didn't have to press this button. Me not pressing this button did more to mitigate the spread of the virus than anybody here wearing a mask. That's all I have to say. You, you all should be ashamed of yourself.
Go right ahead.
Obviously, I'm just as disappointed. You actually stood there and said how you don't even know how you can agree with what you're hearing because it's all crazy. You just said that. You actually said, "It doesn't make sense," and then you went ahead and voted. I don't understand. We have two children crying. My children are going to be crying when I go home, too. This is ridiculous. I don't understand how all of these people were here. I have 400 signatures as well on a petition that don't want masks. I shouldn't say that. Masks optional. We want choice. Why are we denied choice? Why? How can you listen to these children? How can you listen to her and look at her crying over there? I, I don't understand. The impact is way far and wide than what you see here, and it's not okay. And my child will not, my children will never wear a mask. I'm telling you that right now, and you all need to send them without.
Is there anyone else who wants to approach the podium? Just hit the-
What is the difference between now and October 1st? That's what I want to know. And also, the school be funding a mask for my three boys every single day. I will not be buying a mask for my kids ever when they go to the bus stop. The bus driver can give them a mask every single day for the entire year. I will never, ever give them a mask to go to school. My second grader eats his boogers all day long and sucks on them. It's completely unhealthy, and I want to know how everyone voted so I can make sure that everyone is aware so we, how, so we know how to vote in the future for you guys so we can get you off the board.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to board comment. Dr. McGee, you prepared for board comment?
Sure. Just some clarifications. There were some questions about contact tracing. Officially, Neshamie does case investigation. The Department of Health does contact tracing. Last year, during the heat of the things, that line blurred. In my last conversation with Dr. Damsker, I think that was Thursday of last week, and after the email went out, he says we're, they're working and we're going to work together in better communicating on what that process is as far as identifying cases back and forth. For the most part, of all the cases Neshamie had last year, we learned about the cases from the parent or the staff member. If we learned about it from the Bucks County Department of Health, it was three, four days later. So there is talk about moving that, that, that forward. So in addition to that, someone asked about communication as to what the next steps are. This evolves daily. I will continue to communicate as things change, as things adjust. It may not wait for board action, but I will continue to communicate. And then there was a question about alternative seating in the cafeteria. I guess this is particularly the high school. We had that in place prior to these most recent decisions for the, from the Bucks County Department of Health, when the kids were in the cafeteria, to have alternative seating for those who didn't want to be in the cafeteria. It never got out because we didn't get to that point at the high school. We will have that option as well. If you're familiar with Neshamie High School, there are nice red and blue steel picnic tables out front of the hub. There are a number of courtyards and a number of common areas that we used in the past, and we will continue to do that. All right? So I think that addresses some of the questions that came up in, in, in public comment. Mr. Parentana?
Thank you. Does any board member wish- Thank you. Does any board member wish to make any public comment this time? Okay, seeing none.
I do.
Do, go right ahead, Ms. Hallenbach.
Obviously, this issue is very important to both sides of the aisle. Everybody has very strong opinions about that, and they should all be respected, no matter which side you are. Masks optional, masks required. For those of you who said up here, "We voted politically," I don't agree with that. I do believe that most people up here voted the way they felt they had to based on their situation. And the last thing I want to comment on is, no matter what side you're on, if anybody would ever say that Dr. McGee does not care about the children of this school district is horrific. He cares so much about these kids. He might have a different approach to try to get all of the kids back in school, but to say he does not care is appalling, and I don't agree with that at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hallenbach. Well said. Does anybody else want to make any comment?
I would like to comment. I also thought that that was very unfair to make Dr. McGee bear the brunt of putting together a health and safety plan. That's why he's hired. It's not financially driven. We didn't give him a raise because he took away mask options. It, it was an unfair comment. I can tell you, most of you know me, I support his plan, but for me, and the way I voted, I'm up here to represent people that voted me into the off, into my position, and it's my responsibility to go with what the parents wanted, regardless of my personal feelings. That's the way I voted, so I thought you guys should know that. I wanted to thank the kids that came up and spoke. Can we please get Berkeley some lockers? She's been asking for like, she's, this is like the fifth meeting. Let's get the girl some lockers. But thank you, and, listen, it's 19 days. Hang in there, please. Hang in there. Listen.
Let's...
I have a daughter in the district. She's at home probably yelling at me right now at the TV. She is in 12th grade. She's probably very angry at me right now for mentioning it. She, she wants to, she wants to go. She wants to wear a mask. She was pushing me to vote a certain way, and I said, "I, I have to listen to the people that I represent." So I just wanted to let you know that I did hear you. I listened to everybody. I was in support of making it optional, not taking it away or not making it mandatory. So, but please don't think that Dr. McGee's up here for any other reason than our students. That's why we put him in that position.
Mr. Kovacs, go right ahead.
Yep. So I made the decision I made tonight. This is not a, I've mentioned this a few times this evening in, in private, in our executive session. I don't see this as a political issue whatsoever. This is a public health issue. And each person up here, including Doc McGee, puts our children first in our own way. You may not agree with it, and I get that, and I respect it. You don't have to. Doesn't mean we're always gonna vote the same way on every issue, okay? I have good friends up here on this board that voted differently than I did. Guess what? Still friends. Still friends. What brings us together is this very issue. We're all, we all care about it. We all came out here to do something about it, okay? You come, you come, you come, excuse me, you come to a place like this where we have a hot-button issue with people on both sides who care about it, someone's gonna lose, okay? At the end of the day, we're hoping to create something where everyone's going to win in our own way. When you vote, Ms. Bowman mentioned that there are several people here who voted her in. She voted the way her constituents, she expected her constituents to vote. Why? Because they put their trust, their trust and faith in her, okay? She could have voted the other way. My constituents could have done the same thing. Maybe I have some constituents that I pissed off tonight too, okay? I voted the way I voted, and here's the way I voted the way I voted. Number one, I was schooled as an engineer. I have a degree in mechanical engineering, okay? I know we have another gentleman out here who's an engineer too. As any engineer knows, you don't design a bridge to hold just 90% of the people that go across it. You don't design a bridge to hold 95% of the people. You don't design a bridge that'll hold 99% of the people. You hold, you, you design a bridge that's going to hold 400% of the people that cross it. You design safety factors in, and you always err on the side of caution. My vote tonight was my way of erring on the side of caution. I would rather see, unfortunately, this is gonna sound bad, but this, this is me being truthful and blunt, speaking my own truth. I would rather see your kids with rashes on their face and sweat and boogers and all that other stuff than see them in the hospital on a ventilator. Again, I don't have a crystal ball, excuse me, I don't have a crystal ball any better than you.
Let, let the board member finish his comments, please. Let, let, it's board comment time. Let the board member make his comment.
I let everybody else who wanted to speak, speak. It's my turn. Thank you. I will always err on the side of caution. That's the way I was trained, and that's the way I will continue to do things. One more thing. I am a childhood cancer survivor. It's not something I talk about or have talked about before. I'm a childhood cancer survivor. I just celebrated 41 years in remission, okay? I hope and pray that none of you ever have that, or your kids ever have it. I salute all the survivors out there. I hope and pray your kids never come down with that. I wouldn't wish it upon my worst enemy. I don't care if you're on the left or on the right. This isn't a political thing, okay? The, the issue is, when you're giving, I was subjected during my time to radiation and chemotherapy. It's poison. It's poison. Is it inconvenient? Was it inconvenient for me to be subjected to that and puke every night that I got it, or to suffer dizziness and discomfort, side effects from all the, 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 the medicines that I got? Damn straight it was. It sucked. Just like wearing masks sucks. I hate it. I've mentioned that before. I'm gonna be going to work, I'm gonna be going to work. I'm an educator in New Jersey. I'm gonna be going to work, and I'm gonna have to put a mask on to teach. But guess what? I'm gonna do it. It's not a political thing. Someone said, all right, you had to do it, I'd do it. I'm a good soldier. Everyone here, everyone here that you see on this board has taken an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, then the Constitution and the Constitution...
Audience, audience, please, please. It's board comment time.
And the Constitution...
Please.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And that's something that each and every one of us up here, no matter what side of the issue we came off on, that's something that we all agree in, all right? We have our own interpretations, and they should all be respected. So with that, I thank everybody for coming out here tonight, and I appreciate everyone's concern on both sides, so thank you.
Anyone, anyone else? You know, that, stop a sec, a sec. You know, that, you want to talk about not respecting, you know, you and coming up to the podium, whoever just made that comment, you know, then, then, you know, why don't you leave then? I mean, if that's the way, if that's the way you feel and you conduct yourself and you, and you tell us, "We don't respect people," you gotta be kidding me, all right? I mean, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. You really should. Well, you should be. You should be, because, because that type of language is why you have problems, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Mar, go ahead, Mr. Marington. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I, I'd need to explain my vote too. I voted to support Dr. McGee here because Dr. McGee has done more for this school district than anybody I've known, with the possible exception of my dad. I have to bring that up. We've been in the sham, there've been Maringtons in this school district before it was Neshamani. We've never not been involved in this school district, and Dr. McGee has always made the best decisions possible for the overall community of the school district, for the health and safety of our children. And those of you who attacked, I am talking. You shut up. Keep your mouth shut.
All right, decorum. You know what? Audience, please. Everybody was afforded their time to speak.
I'm gonna continue.
It's board comment time.
With Dr. McGee, I apologize for that language. I, I, I just did. I apologize for the language. I do not, however, apologize for my opinions that you people are being incredibly rude to a person who has, who has devoted... Are we gonna be allowed to finish? We didn't take away anybody's rights. Let me finish my opinions. My, I would have voted, actually, my, my support would have been...
Sir, it's board comment time. You asked, you wanted to, people ask, they, you asked, you wanted to hear a board comment. You wanted to hear our opinions on why we voted or didn't vote the way we did, and we're presenting board comment. You've had a chance to speak. It's our turn.
The argument that masks don't work is a false narrative. I think anybody knows that. The fact that, I, I'd like to know where, where people get the idea that the entire CDC, the FDA, and all these people are somehow involved in a conspiracy to make people wear masks. No, it's not, because they work. The...
Finish up there.
If I did have, what I really wanted to vote for was to have masks K through 12, because to me, that is actually a better alternative than, than the, somewhat of a compromise that we have come up with. You know, and I believe that. I was also an educator. I still coach in the school systems. I still deal with high school kids on a daily basis. They all wear their masks when they have to. They also are able to compete, and, and they don't really complain about it. They understand that what they're doing is for the benefit of the whole and for the benefit of getting us back to school as normal quicker than we would if, you know, we allowed kids to just do whatever they wanted. Okay, well, I, I, that's, that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? I'm just, I'm just gonna finish up. A couple people had asked, you know, directly about my comments, and, you know, we do listen to everybody. I listened to, read almost everything that came, responded to every person that sent me an email, except for the ones that came this morning, this morning and afternoon, I couldn't get to them. I purposely worded my statement the way I worded my statement when I talked about my comments of why I would support this plan. And those that don't believe I did the right thing, only heard the portion of it that they wanted to hear. They didn't hear the other portion of it. Our job, we are not medical directors up here, okay? That's not our job. Our job is to provide an education for our children, your children, this community's children. The evidence I presented, and someone made the difference between, you know, medical, you presented the evidence and then you voted against it, is part of the equation. It's not the whole equation. I also studied all the educational data that's provided by our cabinet level and our administrators, showing how much last year's learning loss was. It's horrific. While we did an adequate job of trying to keep kids up, the learning loss was horrific. Hybrid, it works, not the same as classroom. Asynchronous and synchronous learning, you can get by, not the same as classroom. We instituted a three-year K to 5 learning loss program. That's their estimate of how long it's gonna take to get every child up to grade. Three years. So when I weigh that against 30-day period of seeing, once we get kids back in the classroom that are in an age group that have no other protection, they may, they don't, but again, I don't pretend to be a medical scientist, to see if we see what happened in Texas and we see what happened in Florida, to protect these kids and get the most kids back in the classroom so they can actually get the education they deserve, they deserve. September to October was a no-brainer for me, even though, when I look at the medical data, I can't, wouldn't, couldn't make that decision. But when I look at the learning loss data and how these kids were affected last year, our responsibility to provide them with the education that you're paying for, that was an easy call for me. There are 9,400 students in this district that we're responsible for. There's over 70,000 residents, over 35,000 homeowners. We have to make a decision in my mind, and some of my board members didn't agree with me, you know, of what our administration feels is the minimalistic thing we can do to start this year off right and don't end up, don't end up back in the hybrid program or back in the quarantine program, which is what Bucks County wants us to do, based upon their letter on the 24th. I explained why I didn't bring that up, okay? That's gonna put us farther behind. So these, for me, these children have not been in a closed indoor setting, in a large group setting, for protracted hours at a time. I'm willing to say, for this age group, I'm willing to say it's worth 19 days of school, 30 days. As far as clarifying my last comments, they speak for themselves. However, if specific data doesn't show that this is attacking our district, it's spreading in these schools, once these kids get together, I will not bring a motion to the floor. I will not vote yes on a motion to extend it. I designed the motion specifically, specifically to end without board action. It will take board action to renew the motion. So in, in being the president and having to supply the rest of the board members with the information that Dr. McGee provides me, I felt that was the best plan, the easiest thing to do, and to give people the confidence to put their kids back in the classroom where they belong. I am very sorry for the children that really feel deeply about this. I know you want to get back to regular schools. Nothing more I want to get back to is regular school. I think this is the fastest and best way to do it. That's why I voted yes. Does anybody else have any comments? Hearing none, meeting adjourned. Motion second, second by Mr. Sullivan. Thank you all for coming out. We appreciate it.